Okay, good evening. This is the Huntley Community School District 158 Committee of the Whole Meeting for May the 6th. Can we have roll call please?
Mr. Craig.
Here.
Mr. Darren. Mr. Gentry.
Here.
Mr. Fabiano.
Here.
Mrs. Marby.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mrs. Mairena.
Okay, we have quorum. For the record, to tell three, start time, can we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item three is academic spotlight. Doctor's here.
That was my walkout, either. Like it. Good evening, Board of Education. After a year hiatus because of COVID, we are returning to in-person to celebrate those folks who have some milestones this year. And the one we're celebrating in person this year are going to be our retirees. And we couldn't be more grateful than the individuals that have shown up tonight that we're going to recognize. Many of them have been with us for many years and have contributed to the district in many, many different ways. So, we're going to recognize those folks in person tonight, the cabinet and myself, starting tomorrow, and we'll be touring the district and handing out other awards, 10-year, 20, 15, 25, I think we've got a 30 and a 35 to hand out. So, we'll be hitting all the campuses over the next few weeks and going into classrooms and offices to celebrate milestones and anyone who may not have been able to attend tonight. So, we're going to kick things off. Sheriff Paul is going to come up and she is going to introduce two individuals and say a few words about those who are retiring from her field this year.
All right, hello there. First, I have Lynn Bart. So, Lynn is one of our speech and language pathologists. She's been in the district for 19 years and has been at early childhood pretty much the entire time. And prior to that, she was in Sedum and Crystal Lake, couple of different places. But, her heart has been here in early childhood servicing our youngest students with speech and language delays and helping out in the classrooms, like, just dealing with all the changes over the years, you know, education constantly changes, and she rolls with the punches. Like, honestly, it can be so hard to not have her smiling face and positive attitude throughout the hallways because she really just brings that kind of easygoing, roll with the punches, it's okay kind of attitude. So, we're very excited to celebrate Lynn, but also very sad to see her go. When I asked her, what are you going to do, you know, during your retirement, and I knew it was travel, but it was cute, her first thing was, "I want to go to the east coast in the fall to actually see, like, fall leaves," because you can never, as a teacher, you know, we're kind of in our niche for when we can go on vacation. So, it was that, and then spring training. She's a Sox fan, her husband's a Cubs fan, so they can keep that out at spring training. And then spend time with her grandkids. So, we're very, just again, happy to celebrate you Lynn, and I'm so sad to see you leave us, but it's for great things and I hope you'll be back to Sox.
You'll see me.
Thank you. And then I also have Sue, Susan B., come on up. All right, so Sue, oh my goodness. Sue is not only celebrating her retirement, but also 35 years in the district. She has, I mean, anything you want to know about Huntley or our school district, you just ask Sue. She knows the craziest things. And as I was talking to her, she was saying, you know, back in the day, she actually was training as a para at Sedum with Rhonda, Massachusetts, before she was a Massachusetts. She was saying, "Oh, I was a crossing guard at 47." I was like, "We have crossing guards?" And she's like, "Don't age me, Sheriff." I didn't think we ever allowed kids to walk. So, you know, just so many cool experiences throughout the district. But for the Early Childhood Center, she pretty much is the pioneer of our program. She was one of the first paras as part of when we started a preschool and it was just one classroom, and has been with it and watched it grow, and has really been our biggest cheerleader and supporter and advocator for our youngest kids in the district. So, she's just done an amazing and amazing job. And again, same with Lynn, so sad to see you go, but excited for your next chapter, and just congratulations, so.
All right, Sue, we've got a few things. These are the 35-year award, the 35-year pins, we don't see too many of those, okay? And then, we also have your retirement plaque. So, while Cheryl takes that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Next, we'll welcome Brian Falsner from Heinemann.
Well, thank you, everyone. Robin Markey, will you step on up? You're the next contestant in our celebration. So, Mrs. Markey has been a special education teacher in our district for a number of years, and as I have transitioned back here at Heinemann, I've gotten to know her pretty well this year. And I can tell you the thing about Robin that sets her apart from everyone else is her ability to connect with students. Her, I can't tell you how much her students love her. And it's easy to see that when you're in-person with her because she makes a valid effort day in and day out to ask students, "How are you doing? How's it going? What can I do to help you?" But what you have done to make my life so much easier this year is that when we needed supervision in the morning and the afternoon, she was the first one to say, "I'm in. What do you need me to do?" And every morning she asks, "Do you need me to do something else? Do you need me to do something different?" So, she not only makes connections with kids, she makes connections with each and every adult in the building. We're going to miss you. You're going to be really difficult to replace, but I know you'll be in Tennessee, right? Because we talk about this all the time in the hallway in the morning before the kids start coming in. But you are always welcome at Heinemann. You have a home at Heinemann. Want to hark? Always a hark. Exactly. So, congratulations. We're going to miss you, but best of luck, and job well done. Job well done.
Thanks.
We're going to do a transition here. Dr. Bealan's going to be next. I don't know if he has some fancy entrance planned. Be prepared. Sinfeticons or symphony cannons? It could be a number of things here. Dr. Bealan, we are ready for you to come to the podium.
Hey, good evening, everyone. I am just privileged to be here to celebrate. We have two individuals here that are taking their next step to just spend some time with family, and I want to call up Mr. George. I was just telling Mr. George, I felt like it was yesterday we were here celebrating the speech team with him and just the work that he has done with our young people, and now they are getting ready to graduate, and he's getting ready to go on to some bigger and better things with family and so forth. And, Mr. George, I know the impact in the 23 years that you've been at Huntley High School, the impact that you have had on generations of young people and just knowing that you are leaving a legacy at Huntley High School. We appreciate the work that you've done, your dedication to the profession, your dedication to the kids and to this community, and knowing that you're not going far, and we know that he's already offered. He was like, "Hey, look, speech team, like, whatever you need, I'm here, let me know." And that's just the spirit of Tom George, and we just appreciate you and just want to say thank you and congratulations on your retirement.
He's not wearing a Cubs shirt.
He's not. He's wearing a Bears shirt, but that's for the right reason. Ms. Runk? So, Ms. Runk and I, we were actually out there debating on like, how many years she's actually been at Huntley High School, and I said, "So, just so I can get this correct, you know, is it 18 or 19?" She was like, "I don't know." She was like, "I love my job so much." And she was joking with her kids today that she, because they asked her the same question. And that's just a testament, again, to just her work and her dedication to kids, right? Just seeing the joy on their faces, but also to being able to connect with them and just knowing that, you know, she doesn't have to come to work, but she gets to come to work, right? And she laughs about it, and she just, and just being able to connect with her kids. So, I appreciate the work that you do, getting ready to go and spend some time, much-needed time with family, and that's always a joy. But knowing that you've got a home here at Huntley High School, and I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart, and I've only been here for just a few years, and so, just, you know, hearing your legacy from the kids and just knowing what you've done for the department, CTE and business world is just great. So, thank you so much for what you do, and congratulations on your retirement.
So, Marlowe this year has five tenured staff members retiring, two of which are with us this evening. I will first ask Mrs. Janet Burkhalter if she would be coming center stage. So, Janet is dressed as Janet is always dressed. She is wearing a theater shirt, but not a stinking t-shirt. She's wearing a Janet Burkhalter production t-shirt. Janet is finishing up her 23rd year here in District 158, and Janet, as a special education teacher, has shown such unbelievable flexibility. In my three years at Marlowe, Janet has willingly moved to three different teams. This year, on her last year, went from eighth grade down to sixth grade to help our new students transition in during a very difficult time. And she came to me and said, "Working with kids and reading is my passion. We have students that were remote last year. Please let me help work with these students who are coming into Marlowe to help them be successful." So, the admiration I have for her on her last year to change grade levels and to put that passion in is extraordinary. And nobody puts on a show like Janet Burkhalter. If you've never seen any of Janet's productions, Janet has done the costuming for our district, and there was no space to store the costuming, so Janet temperature-controlled her basement and stored the district costuming in her home. And this year Janet says, "I think we've got some space out at Marlowe," and we said, "We're going to bring it back over." And I think we had three or four U-Haul trucks load through.
I didn't see this much stuff. You didn't go in the other room.
So, if anyone needs a costume to wear for anything, we have them at Marlowe, and it's the high-quality seam strips of Janet. So, Janet, congratulations. Thank you for all you do. The connections you have with students, even through high school and beyond, is something that I admire. So, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And I will now ask Mrs. Dawn Mahaffey to come forward. Dawn is finishing her 36th year in District 158. So, to call her a legend is definitely appropriate. Now, Dawn knows everything about District 158 and about Marlowe, and that is what's going to be missing from Marlowe next year, is because when anybody has a question, we go to Dawn Mahaffey. Dawn Mahaffey is the person that I have, in my three years, gone to to run ideas past, to say, "Can you tell me why this happens?" And she knows the history of what happened years ago. As a math person, Dawn checks all of our schedules for IAR testing this week. Ms. Fisher and I worked for hours. We thought we had the schedule perfect, and we're like, "We're ready to put this out." And we both shook our head, and we're like, "No, we need to let Dawn look at it and check it for us." And she did for all the grade levels and things like that. So, her team has a countdown every day. They have gifts where she's opening up, and her door is separated, but to celebrate 36 years is a huge, huge thing. So, thank you for everything you've done. You will be remembered for a long, long time there.
Great, Dawn.
I just signed Dawn up to sub. She doesn't know it yet.
Tell me all the math ones.
Invite Michelle Happel to the podium.
Good evening. Michelle Happel from Martin. I have two retirees, but I have one present with me, it's Kathy Vernston, and I'm just going to share a few things about Kathy. I've been in the district four years and worked with Kathy for two of the four, so I had to do some digging to get some really great information that I wanted to share for her. So, Kathy has started as a language, a speech-language pathology assistant, correct? And Kathy didn't go back to school to become the speech pathologist until mid-life, is what I had heard. So, while the rest of us were buying convertibles, Kathy is returning back to school to be able to provide more for our district. So, that was very inspiring for me to share. Kathy has been more than just Martin, from my understanding. Kathy has been to Chatham, Martin, Heinemann, and she shared with me tonight a little bit of time at Conley as well. So, our students across D158 have had the privilege of working with Kathy. Some interesting things about Kathy, when I talked to the rest of her teammates and said, you know, "Give me some words that you feel would be a good fit to describe Kathy," when I talked to everybody and shared the greatness with everybody, a bunch came out, kindness, calming, caring, but two very, very important words that rose to the top over and over again with Kathy was dedication and compassion, not just to her students, but to the family she was servicing. So, that is very admirable of Kathy, and I really, really appreciate you being there for our family here at Martin. So, Kathy does have some exciting news that she's going to be looking forward to in retirement, and she's going to see her grandparents soon, and that's very exciting for her as well. So, we want to wish you the best of luck all here, our Martin family wishes you the best of luck, and I'm sure all D58 wants you to really enjoy your retirement, and thank you for all that you've done for our district.
Thank you, Dawn. Thank you so much. Thank you.
I took my suit off because I'm...
I'm glad you did.
I would like to invite Rose Buckley to stand up here with me for a few minutes.
Hi.
For those of you who haven't met Rose, Rose works in the Human Resources Office. She is in charge of the benefits. She's been with us for 19 years. When I came over five years ago, Rose said, "I'm giving you five years." I said, "Four. I'm giving you four years, okay?" I was asking for 11 more, but we didn't get that, so we tried to negotiate. So, she gave me what she told me she was going to give me, which is fantastic. I can't say enough about Rose, the role she plays, and you know, if you go back to 2002 and Rose was enrolling everyone in insurance, it was on paper, she would sign them up, put them in, now it's a couple clicks for everybody. So, just to give you an idea of how things have not only evolved in the school district, but in our offices, at District Office, too. She's been amazing, you know, taking on new challenges. If you've had a baby in this district, you've met Rose. If you've had to be out because of an illness, you've met Rose. She explains everything very thoroughly, what a leave would look like, you know, what that process is, and it's a very stressful, and I'm not going to cry. I'm not going to cry. All right. All right. Good. You cry for me then, Jess. All right. So, when you listen to her work with individuals and explain, you know, it's high stress, you know, folks are having a baby or the illnesses that some folks are battling, and Rose is always calm, and she explains everything perfectly and helps put our employees at ease. And, you know, for just being one person, the impact she's had on employees across this district is unmeasurable. And, you know, probably, people will still send emails to Rose once you're gone. We're going to have to, we're going to have to get that email where it forwards over for the new person who's replacing you, so that's just a habit. And Rose receives emails on stuff that even have to do with health insurance, too. And she's able to answer those questions, and just been a valuable, valuable asset to me, coming over to this role. She's mentored me through, you know, an area that I had to learn, and so I'll forever be thankful in that. And we're learning every day. I mean, Rose and I have sat in meetings, we've sat in hearings with judges, we've done a number of things together. So, it's been, you know, a pleasure, Rose, over these last few years, and I thought I wasn't going to have to look at my cheat sheet, but I'm going to have to. I think I covered it all. You know, the last thing I want to say is Rose puts herself before everyone else, and she's not only willing to help our employees here in District 158, but she's willing to help, you know, the office staff, the people in this building, and there's just no way to measure that. Rose is going to be greatly missed with this district and office. I know she's going to stop by and visit every now and then. We get some good food when Rose is around, that's for sure. So, when Rose is bringing food in, stop by, that's for sure. So, there's going to be something good to eat. So, Rose, on behalf of District Office, everyone that you've served, thank you for your years of service in Huntley 158. Next, I'd like to invite Rhonda up to the podium, and Jessica. I'm going to say something first, though. You've got quite a few people to speak to tonight for you. So, I'm not the main person, but I got to share this with you. I'm not a big fan of long voicemails, to be quite honest, and Rhonda Lee's the best voicemail ever. And I don't know if she does this for everybody, or is it just for me?
It's really from her.
Oh, it's for you. Keyword, it's everybody. So, you'll get a voicemail, it's one sentence. It'll say, "This is Rhonda, keyword," and then fill in the blank. So, I went back in the last month just to see what all the keywords were. Google doesn't go back in the universe. So, it was COVID vaccine, COVID quarantine, PE, supervision, and then my favorite was angry principal. So, I think when I saw that, when I was in my car and I called for my car, so I had to see what was going on. She just needed to vent, so it was all good. So, Rhonda, I thought I was going to get up here and say something about the Cubs and the Cardinals, and I looked at my phone before I came in here, and I just saw what the Cubs did to the Dodgers this week, and as a Cardinal fan, I'm now concerned. So, if this would have been a week ago, I would have had something to say, but I'm going to back off on that. And I'm going to turn things over to Ms. Lombard.
Well, before I get to Rhonda, I do want to say, I think that, I love that this week always happens either right at Teacher Appreciation Week or right around, because tonight, and I should have gone first, because of course I get all teary-eyed, I worked with Rhonda for a long time, with Rose for a long time, I saw a paraprofessional when I was a student here and a teacher here retire, and so the impact that all of these individuals have had on District 158 has been amazing. And there's only two teachers left, one is in the room. You know, the last thing I want to say is Rose puts herself before everyone else. And she's not only willing to help our employees here in District 158, but she's willing to help, you know, the office staff, the people in this building. And there's just no way to measure that. Rose is going to be greatly missed with this district and office. I know she's going to stop by and visit every now and then. We get some good food when Rose is around, that's for sure. So when Rose is bringing food in, stop by, that's for sure. So there's going to be something good to eat. So Rose, on behalf of District Office, everyone that you've served, thank you for your years of service in Huntley 158. Next, I'd like to invite Rhonda up to the podium. And Jessica? I'm going to say something first though. You've got quite a few people to speak to tonight for you. So I'm not the main person, but I got to share this with you. I'm not a big fan of long voicemails, to be quite honest. And Rhonda leaves the best voicemails ever. And I don't know if she does this for everybody, or is it just for me?
Keyword.
It's really from keyword.
Oh, it's for you. Keyword, it's everybody. So you'll get a voicemail, it's one sentence. It'll say, this is Rhonda, keyword, and then fill in the blank. So I went back in the last month just to see what all the keywords were. Google doesn't go back in the universe. So it was COVID vaccine, COVID quarantine, PE, supervision, and then my favorite was angry principal. I think when I saw that, when I was in my car and I called for my car, so I had to see what was going on. She just needed to vent, so it was all good. So Rhonda, I thought I was going to get up here and say something about the Cubs and the Cardinals. And I looked at my phone before I came in here and I just saw what the Cubs did to the Dodgers this week. And as a Cardinal fan, I'm now concerned. So if this would have been a week ago, I would have had something to say, but I'm going to back off on that. And I'm going to turn things over to Ms. Lombard.
Well, before I get to Rhonda, I do want to say, I think that, I love that this week always happens either right at Teacher Appreciation Week or right around. Because tonight, and I should have gone first, because of course I get all teary-eyed. Worked with Rhonda for a long time, worked with Rose for a long time. I saw a paraprofessional when I was a student here and a teacher here retire. So the impact that all of these individuals have had on District 158 has been amazing. And there's only two teachers left. One is in the room, Mr. Stires and Mr. Blake, who are teachers of mine who are still here in the district. So I'm sure we'll have watery eyes in a few years as well. All right. But on Rhonda, it's my pleasure to get to say a few words about Rhonda today. But Rhonda has had an impact on so many people. So I did reach out to other people and I'm going to share some of their things as well. But just to give a little history of Rhonda, and if I get the dates wrong, I apologize. I don't go with years, we're going with dates. We have to do the math themselves. So Rhonda came to the district in 1987 after having taught two years in Whitewater, Wisconsin, right? You were a couple of years, did it so? I showed that in your file.
It was my first.
Oh, well then, we have that in there. Okay. So exactly, so your whole career has been here.
How is your career?
Rhonda wasn't a stranger to District 158 and the Huntley community because Rhonda, if you don't know, graduated from Hampshire. However, you lived in what I, I don't know if it's really a neighborhood, but the area that was kind of split. Some went to Hampshire and some went to Huntley. And so she was very familiar with that. So after college, I'm super grateful that you came back and were able to have an impact on our district. I learned from her file that Adam carried down, but says I need something else to carry it back. Rhonda started here as a PE slash special education aide, and then was hired that next year as a PE teacher. During that time, she was the intermural director. She coached flag football that I didn't even know we had, basketball for boys and girls, student council, but she thinks she just helped assist with that area. Was a dean, an interim principal, and then a principal. And I, when I was looking at it, I knew Rhonda had been here for a while, but what I didn't realize is while you were in the North Building, not called North at the time, I was actually over at the high school building finishing out before graduating.
As a student.
As a student, no, as a student and really wished that I had had that experience with you, Rhonda. You have taught me so much as an administrator and having said you as a teacher would have been just the icing on the cake. So throughout her time, she worked at what was referred to as the K8 Building, later called North. She was at the high school, which was later called South, and now the present Park District Building. You were at Chatham, but only like part, like one grade level, and Martin, and now Conley. She was here through the great growth boom, the sea and sea of mobile classrooms, the dinner shift, as you refer to it at Martin. The pilot, you were the principal who stepped up and piloted the one-to-one initiative for the district. And now you can say that you have worked through a pandemic. Totally different environments, led a school year, and a half of varied learning environments due to this pandemic. And I have to say that through all of these things, you led them quite successfully. Rhonda's been many things to many people. And when Adam asked if I'd be willing to speak about her, it was an easy shore, but I knew that it was more important to give other voices that you've impacted. So I'm going to read some of these, but I'm not going to say who they are and you can kind of just guess. "One staff member that in my career, I've worked with Rhonda longer than I have worked with anyone else, both as a classroom teacher and now as an instructional coach. Becoming a coach and working with her on her leadership level had been a new learning experience for me, and I'm so thankful that I've had. Rhonda, I'll miss your humor, quick thinking, and just your presence at Conley. You will be so missed." "Rhonda is a upbeat, fantastic, even in an injury boot leader who sees life as fantastic." "Rhonda is the queen at building relationships, whether that's with students or staff. We all can take something away from the way that you build relationships. As you can imagine, I'm sad to lose Rhonda as a principal. She has been amazing, absolutely amazing to work for, and it's honestly hard for me to put into words how much I'll miss her. I'm sure everyone knows what a huge Cubs fan Rhonda is, but what you don't know is this person is a huge Sox fan. Throughout the years, we've always had a good-natured rivalry going about our favorite teams. We send texts during the games, funny memes and joke about how awful each of our teams have been the last few years. We also share in the success that they have and send a huge congrats on the game or the World Series wins. I will honestly miss Rhonda, everything about Rhonda, but the joking around and deep sports talk about what I'll miss the most. "Rhonda inspires many people. Rhonda, I'll never be able to thank you enough for the way that you have mentored me through my career. You are the reason I applied to be an assistant principal at Martin. You're the reason I applied for the principal position at Conley. You're a big part of the why I am the leader that I am today. Thank you for your support, your kindness, and your belief in me. You are a well-deserved retiree and go Cubs." "You've invested in people. Rhonda hired me 21 years ago and I've worked with her in many different capacities. I greatly appreciate how she's self-motivated to learn and grow as an educator, something I will take away with myself. Beyond a learner, she puts families first and generally cares about others. I'm going to greatly miss working with her." She was in there a moment ago. Rhonda, personally, I have learned so much from you and I have definitely taken away and have been impressed and witnessed your dedication to the students and staff of District 158 for so many years. I hope that you know that you're leaving more than the legacy of Cubs and bowling with District 158. You've touched the lives of so many people. One of the things that I will always remember about you, and it's something that all of us should keep in mind, relationships are key. Building those and maintaining those are at the foundational level and are what makes us successful. And your importance in empowering and investing in those you work with has been an inspiration, and we thank you for all your years of service, Rhonda."
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Not so fast. So a few things that I'd like to share about Rhonda before we do, you can't chalk that easy by me. And I am going the baseball route in a moment. But we should also remember that Rhonda was the principal of the very first one-to-one building in District 158. And that's done so for a reason. Because one of the names that Rhonda has around the principal table is she is the schedule master. And if anyone can figure out how to make it work in a building, you're looking at her. I don't know what we're going to do when that has to be Scott Eddings. My baseball comments are actually, you know, for those of you that know, I'm a huge Cardinals fan. So the Cubs-Cardinals rivalry that Rhonda and I had has been a lot of fun, but it comes, my comments come more from a place of respect. Huge baseball fan, deep baseball knowledge, and is just a lover of the game. I've always appreciated that and liked it a whole lot better when the Cardinals were the more recent World Series champion than the Cubs. And I know that you're enjoying that. Something that, you know, Rhonda may not realize is how much, as a new principal of Marlowe, in my first principalship, I valued the connection that she gave me with her husband, Steve, who was the principal of Rotola Middle School, the largest middle school in the state of Illinois, to Marlowe's as being the second-largest middle school in the state of Illinois. And trying to learn from an experienced principal because of that connection. The connector of people has been huge for me. Rhonda is an advocate of children, always putting kids first in everything she does. She's a supporter of teachers, which is why every building she's been in, the teachers adore her. And it's because she invests in, as you heard, the foundations of relationship. But what you may not know about Rhonda, she's also the designer of logos. We won't go there, but just know Rhonda has a major hand in our current District 158 logo. And most importantly, she's a friend, and a friend to so many and anyone she came across. I thank you so much for the time and energy and leadership that you provided to our school district. We're forever grateful. Congratulations.
Should I recap the 33 years that I've been here, starting with 1987? Thanks to everybody, and thanks for all the kind words that everybody said.
We're going to have all the retirees come back in for a quick picture. Everybody, we all get it. All right. Big smiles.
Everybody's going to have a good smile.
Thank you, everyone.
Doctor Zero won't hear this, but he has a heck of a job trying to replace all these highly valued people in this district.
You won't replace them.
Yeah, that's exactly what I, that's what I was thinking too.
Dawn Mahaffey, you knew someone taught her, or she taught someone math. We just went, not a problem. She was that good. And Tom George, kids talk about Tom George, there is a glow of pride about him. You can't replace him.
I would agree 100% with Steve. People are what make this district run, and those types of people, the contribution that they've all made collectively to this district made it, put it, gave us the foundation from which we have and how we've grown. You're right, you don't replace people with that kind of knowledge within your district. It's a very daunting task, so. And if you think about it, each one of those people has been here longer than the bricks and mortar that all these buildings have combined. All of them have been here longer than every single building we have in this district. So definitely be difficult to replace. So we'll move on, because we have to. And we're on to public comments, and we have one. It's Mr. Stires.
And you'll have no limit.
I think, I think I'd better make that go. I have been here 32 years. And good or bad, this has been my only full-time job that I've had in my career. So I want to talk about something that I've heard, and I know it's coming up, but I want to express some concerns. And this deals with recognizing American diversity, which is coming up and you'll probably hear about, if not this month, then another. And I want to express my very grave concerns about this program, okay? I was looking at it, it was presented on Wednesday, and they had a series of months in which different groups will be identified and looked at. And the question is, why would I possibly find this to be a disturbing trend? Well, the fact is, is that first of all, if we look at it with Latinx, American, disabled, indigenous, Black women, and LGBTQ plus, my concern is, is that first of all, who's made these decisions? Who decided that these are going to be? Who will be left out? Because now we're picking identities and saying, these will be chosen, these will not. I started thinking of others. What about the Jews? What about Muslims? What about Poles, Irish, Italians, the Chinese in America, the Japanese experience, Asian and Pacific Islanders? All of these people, we look at, people who have come to America, what are we doing? We are starting to sit and look at them as an identity first and then Americans second. And my concern is, who decides? What criteria will be used? And think about it, if we have more and more that wants to come into this group, we're going to have to take away weeks from somebody else. And then it becomes, well, I'm going to get mine, you're going to get yours. And it's all going to be for this idea of what's going to, who's going to have the most influence, who's going to be the most deserving, what are we going to look at? And this concerns me because if you look at the form that was to be filled out, they weren't asking about what culture do you wish to celebrate, they're asking to what identity are you most interested in contributing? Identity first? This concerns me. And then we're going to have an entire month of stuff directly associated with this identity. Well, the question is, who will control the narrative? Will it be a celebration of culture? Or will it be stories of the oppressed and the oppressors? Sadly, we're looking at identity politics here, something that I have looked at with grave concerns in our country. And I really am concerned we get that here. I look at this and I say, in the end, what could happen? We could become a nexus of identity where each will try to gain at the expense of others. I will get my identity first to somebody else. This is a zero-sum game, which is not used to build up and ennoble our students. It won't bring about a sense of unified community, something that's so crucial in this school. In this high school, what is the greatest thing we've seen out of this reaction to COVID has been an isolation, a separation. There hasn't been that sense of unity. And yet here we are, creating more divisions. No longer are we a community unified as Red Raiders looking to be successful in academics in schools. Now we're going to be an identity first, where what? Where we attend Huntley High School. I want Red Raiders. I don't want an identity. Let us have these celebrations of communities. I have no problem with that. But dictating as to what is going to be the narrative, who's going to give it, how do we determine? This leads to a lot of issues that really strike me as a Pandora's Box. Now I know, and I know the people that are involved, they are good teachers, they are friends and colleagues of mine. But I think it's a bad mistake. Because unfortunately, in the public sector, we have a problem with intentions. Number one, we want to assess ideas based on their intentions rather than what they actually can create or do. And I think we'll get some perverse incentives here. And number two, what do we know about intentions? It is the pavement upon which the road to hell is paved. And I am concerned. I look at these, this does not mean for me to say that there is nothing different about communities. Communities are necessary. Communities, as our forefathers came and they had communities, it was necessary. There were stories, there's shown bonding by the stories that were done, the oral traditions that were used. What were they used? They were word of warnings, of celebration, of overcoming. Those are the stories that families should tell, that communities should tell. We should not be the one dictating. And that scares me because then we start getting into one voice, saying, I've got news for you. If you know anything about the Latinx, and I don't even know if that's the right word anymore, they're not all the same. We cannot have a one-size-fits-all on this right here. And that scares me. If you look at the Cuban community, the Mexican community, I've got news for you, they are not the same. And don't even get started on the differences between the two. And don't even get started on the differences between the Canadians and the Argentinians. There are serious differences, they're not one thing. Europe is not one group, we know that, France, Germany, and the like. Why should we expect the same of the Latin community? This is what we're getting ourselves into. I leave this with a point that I have. One of the greatest things our school ever did, because when I was growing up in high school, and maybe you remember, where did we put all the special ed kids? Oh, we put them over in that hallway, where sometimes we'd have the door closed, that's where they went. And if they were part of it, they stayed over there, because, you know, special ed. One of the smartest, bravest things we ever did, because we had some of the finest special ed teachers I have ever met. They took the entire special ed group and they plopped it right in the middle of the school, in the circle. They put it right there, and then they did something even more, they started a buddies club. And people went, oh, I'll do it, I'll get some credits, it'll look good on my resume. I cannot tell you how many of my students, when I wrote recommendations and asked, what did they talk about? They talked about their experience in the buddies club, because what they saw is by working with kids in special ed, they saw, I started to realize these kids were like me, and we had a commonality. It wasn't us and them, it was we. There was a commonality, and there was a growth and a bonding, and it's one of the best things I've ever seen. Because we're no longer, oh, who are they? My assertion is, this recognizing American diversity is taking us backwards. Let us celebrate who we are. Let us celebrate people working together, celebrate the speech team, celebrate acting. But let's not start celebrating how one has a different identity than the other. Isn't our individual and the content of our character more important than the identity that we are assigned? I really hope you consider this. I really, really hope. It won't affect me. I'll be gone in a number of years, and I'm crotchety enough to do my own thing. But what will happen over time? That scares me, people. It really does. Thank you.
Thank you. No further public comment? On to number five, revision adoption of the agenda. Does anybody have any revisions to the agenda? That, I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Second from Mr. Gentry, uh, we have roll call.
Mr. Garrett. Mrs. Mendez.
Yes.
Mr. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Fabriano.
Yes.
Mrs. Mayurino.
Yes.
Mr. Cranny.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Okay. That's item six, um, Mr. Garrett, curriculum and structure.
Okay. Okay, we have one, uh, first item on the agenda is six dot one, planning for remote in-person programming, Dr. Red.
All right, thank you. Our, our purpose this evening, um, is to share, share aspects of, of what, uh, what planning, begin sharing aspects of what next year, uh, is going to look like. There are many factors that, uh, that we still do not know, so we're not making a formal commitment to everything that may be discussed this evening, or the, the totality of in-person instruction, because we're still waiting on some guidelines from ISB. Um, but I do want to share, we do have to get in front of, um, the remote option and the extent and, and differences, um, of what that, that may look like. So, the purpose of tonight's presentation is, is to share the guiding principles of how we're approaching remote and online learning for next year, uh, share our planning process for remote and online programming, describe the programming considerations, uh, that, that we have been, um, been considering and thinking about, and we want to be sure we bring that to you, so that you can, can weigh in. And then describe some potential models based on the feedback that we've obtained from students and parents thus far. Share our timeline for the next steps. So, the goals of tonight's presentation is to present our, our remote learning models and options for next year that are responsive to the student needs, um, based on those surveys that we conducted. As well as ensuring that what we create has sustainability for future planning of what online student life and student, uh, coursework can look like at the secondary level, uh, moving forward, that matches our district vision. So, some of the guiding principles that, uh, that we're using to, uh, to help us down this path is that, that we believe strongly that a strong majority of our students learn best in person. Our intention is that, that a vast majority of our students will come to school every single day, uh, for full day next year. Um, again, there are some guidelines we're waiting on, uh, from ISB that I'll, I'll point out later, that, um, that will have to preclude a formal announcement. Um, however, when I, to get, as, as in front of this as we can. We know that some students learn better in a remote format, we've known that for some time. One of the catalysts for change that COVID is likely bringing to the educational system is recognizing that and bringing that to the forefront. Um, and as you know, it was prior to remote learning, the, the division and the idea of, of online courses to high school was a part of our long-term plan. This is expediting some of that. Um, any remote learning plan must reflect the quality of our 158 education. Neither the quality of an individual student's education nor the culture of learning within our schools can be sacrificed in the name of choice, meaning the in-person experience is still our priority. Um, but we, given the circumstances, we need to provide for, um, for, for families and students and their, and their free will for what they believe is best for their kids, given the nature of the pandemic and the unknowns. But some of the choices that you make to be remote, um, will impact our ability, whether we can provide them based on what the in-person, uh, requirements of our programs need. Want to recognize that we understand that structural and operational considerations may force decisions upon our families, um, between remote learning and school-based opportunities. I'll go into more detail about that, but as an example, a tangible example, if you're interested in being in, in the youth residency program and we're allowed back in the hospital, that's a physically present internship. You can't be remote and not be able to go to the hospital, that, that, that learning experience can't be translated to an online experience. Some of our computer science classes that require in-district hardware, um, autos, for instance, you may not even be aware, I learned this today, that some of our, to the extent at which our teachers have gone to serve our kids during this, um, this crisis, we're delivering autos parts to their homes for them to participate remotely and take apart, and learn to put it back together. Uh, and that has worked, kind of, to the extent of giving the student the opportunity, but it can't work long-term, um, if, if, if whole classes are remote versus in-person. We don't have the, the, the materials for that. Um, and then we understand that a large, that the number of, of, and distribution of students who remain remote will be a large driver in terms of the model that we can implement, and I'll go into details about that, um, here shortly. So, some of the considerations we need to keep in mind, uh, the impact of rapidly emerging IDPH and ISB guidelines will impact our ability of what we can and cannot do. For instance, the re, we have to wait until ISB tells us whether, um, a remote and online option is available in terms of operating as a school, and is allowable to be, live remote during the 21, 22 school year, as they did this year. ISB granted permission and said, we must offer a remote option. We are anticipating that they are going to allow us to choose to continue to do that option. However, information that, that, that came out in the last couple, or it came out today, as a matter of fact, um, the governor is predicting that June 11th is the date when state of Illinois will move into phase five. Will that impact ISB's, uh, allowance for a remote option? We don't know that yet, so that's going to, um, be a key, a key factor if they give us that freedom. The impact of the vaccine availability on school-aged children. This is a large driver in our why, as to why a remote option is on the table in District 158. Uh, we've had a lot of internal debate about this, because most recent ISB guidance states that, that we are required to offer a remote option for families, um, who have medical concerns, and a list of medical conditions and concerns within their families, um, that, that may meet that criteria. However, as we debated this internally, I don't feel good about telling a family and taking away your free will of what you think is good for your child and the safety for how you're handling the situation, if there's not a vaccine available. We've just learned that we believe on Monday, the FDA will be releasing the Pfizer vaccine for all, all, uh, all students 12 and older. Great sign for our secondary schools, but we still don't have an idea as to when, you know, three and four and five-year-olds, up to 11-year-olds will be eligible for that vaccine. And as you'll see in our survey data, that's a major driver in the vast majority of our families that are considering a remote option, as an indicator for when they're, they're comfortable with their students returning to school. And I'm, I'm hesitant, as a school district, to take that decision away from families, given what they've endured over the last year. Um, and if they found success and they're waiting for that, we don't know when that is, um, that's been, that's been a struggle of ours. Um, some considerations, we must maintain the high quality of teaching and learning in our student services that are driving some of these decisions. Uh, we will provide needed teacher and student resources for remote and in-person instruction. As I mentioned, the autos, the auto automotive parts, they need to go home. If we have an entire remote section, we may not, we may not have the necessary resources, um, to have thirty, thirty carburetors at home and in-person in order for our programs to run, as just one example. Another example being the, like, yearbook and TV studios, those are hardwired in-district, um, computer-based resources that we don't have in a, in a mobile, mobile form, um, for students to access, as well as the, the filming and the interviewing and, and all of that. So, just a couple of examples. Um, and then our, our most important maybe is to limit concurrent instruction. Uh, we've worked our way through this year, um, I think everyone who has had a, a child in, in our schools that has experienced concurrent, concurrent instruction, it's not, it's probably their least favorite aspect, um, of learning during the pandemic. And I can tell you from our teacher's perspective, it's their least favorite aspect of teaching during the, the pandemic. Um, it's not easy, it's not easy to do. Um, and we are going to, to do everything we possibly can to, um, to prevent that from happening in the future. Um, we're going to create remote sections for a comprehensive online program wherever possible. Remote sections, when we shifted from our elementary to being with remote-only teachers, was, was very difficult, but it was the best move that we could have made, um, and has served our, our children and their families well. Um, and at the secondary level, um, it, it created some restrictions for us when our students came back, but at the same time, in terms of quality of instruction for those remote students, it was the, the best possible scenario for them. Um, we have created an appropriate staffing model for learning, uh, based on student remote enrollment at each grade level, knowing the student numbers may change, meaning there's a staffing component to this that we have to keep in mind. Um, it will be, uh, based on our feedback tonight, we're in, uh, prepared to, to post a number of elementary openings tomorrow to prepare for remote sections. Um, and that, just we need to keep in mind that there is a staffing component to being able to run this, this remote option. District-wide sections will be in place at elementary and middle school, I'll go into that detail a little bit later, but if you're in first grade and you're choosing to be remote, a McCavan teacher in first grade may be teaching McCavan, Leggie, and Chastic students, creating one elementary section, because the numbers aren't going to be able to support a teacher per school, um, and that's, that's one of our major considerations. Um, and an elective remote status is dependent upon student, uh, success in that modality. And what that means is, for, for this remote academy, uh, we'll be, be building out very clear, um, criteria and expectations of what attendance should look like, engagement, um, and achievement, and, and where that trigger point's going to be for a discussion of, is this the right, we did it this year, but is this, is this the right, um, environment for you, and how, how is that going to happen? You can't elect to be remote and then just go dark on us and disappear. That compulsory education law is still in place, and we need our kids to learn and engage with us. So, um, we recognize the, the need and desire, but we also need to be sure that, um, the engagement level is, is in place. So, on to some, we recently conducted a survey, um, to, to prepare for this. Uh, pre-K through 11 families, we surveyed just over eight thousand families, sent that out on April 21st, and just under eighty percent response, response rate, um, and about ten percent of our families indicated that they had interest in a remote option. It's not a commitment, but they had interest. Um, and of the, the remaining twenty-one percent, we are making the assumption, as of right now, um, that if they did not complete the survey, they are intending to return in person. But as I said, this was just to, to gather where our level of interest was, it's not a commitment. Um, and we need to understand that, you know, this figure represents potential interest, as I said, and not that commitment. So, here's some of the details.
First question for you.
Sure.
I was just getting that, what, what, uh, um, assumption of those who didn't have to complete the survey, sorry, you're saying that's the twenty percent?
We're, we're assuming that if you didn't take the survey, you're most likely, you're planning to be in person.
I thought it was specific to that question, that's what kind of crossed me up.
Oh, sure, no problem. Um, all right, so some of the feedback here, um, of those interested in the remote options, seventy-five percent of them indicated that pandemic-related reasons was their, was driving their interest. Um, you know, twelve percent said they believed it was better for their learning environment, and better for their students' learning, and eleven percent said it was, it improved their social, emotional, and mental health. We've known for quite some time that some of our, our school avoidance is because of anxiety. Um, this is, uh, one of the drivers in support of those students who have a difficult time, and at the high school level especially, such a large, comprehensive high school, it can be overwhelming for some, um, which is, is why, you know, Blended's been as successful as, as it has for some students. It gives them that flexibility and control, and online being the next step. So, once the pandemic-related concerns have subsided, we needed to know what they seek to return. And, you know, obviously, you know, ninety-two percent of them said, said yes, um, that eight percent probably are finding remote very successful. They like their flexibility, um, and they like the, the learning modality, and wanted to continue. So, other, some more detail, what conditions would need to exist for your student to return to school? Um, largest number of, of respondents here indicating that vaccines being available for school-aged children. Um, and right behind that, somewhat surprisingly to me, was that masks would no longer be required in school. Um, and then distancing protocols, meaning in, in the cafeteria, um, and in the classroom, being relaxed, um, and then, and other category. So, in summary, uh, about ninety percent of our families are not interested in remote. Seventy-five percent of that ten percent, um, says the pandemic is what's driving their interest. And then, um, what's, uh, the vast majority, ninety-two percent, saying they will be back once, um, the pandemic has, has subsided for them, and families are interested in their remote option. A combination of factors contributing to their decision, the vaccine, masking, uh, complete, community-level metrics, availability of transportation, among a couple of others.
Scott, what do you think the, uh, the pandemic subsiding metric is for those that you're daring to guess it, what that means for them?
Well, what, what we've gathered, you know, what, what didn't make it into the specific details, just to get put in perspective, we, we had about five hundred and forty or so families, um, that were in this, this remote category. And I, and I want to say it was four hundred and sixty to four hundred and eighty of them said they would be coming back when a vaccine was available. So, I, that, to me, that, I think when, when, when we have vaccine available for all school-aged children, I think that, I don't know if that's specifically addressing the concern, I think for the people to be ready for things to return more to normal. And, and what I think this represents is, there's a sector of our, our community, um, that, that maybe this is their first opportunity to say, hey, we're still taking this pandemic extremely seriously, and we're still kind of on lockdown, waiting for the vaccine to be available for our kids. Or there's also, we know we have a lot of underlying health concerns. Um, some of the items on the list that ISB put out were things like smoking in the family, increased risk, um, of, of COVID impacting your family negatively, obesity, to asthma, to, um, to diabetes. All those things were technically in ISB's guidance of acceptable medical conditions to be home. Um, and what we know now, after living this, living with this for, you know, over a year, is those factors have, um, have been attributed to an increased likelihood of COVID being severe. Um, and I think that may be driving their selection, their, their concern. That adequately. So, what does this look like? And there are some, there are a lot of differences. The elementary is the most similar to what, uh, next year, to what we've experienced since January of this year. Um, you know, early identification of those remote students is important. Our principals are chomping at the bit to get these students pulled out of the assignments they're building for them and placed into these remote sections, but based on these responses, and the, the number of people that indicated they may be interested, we don't anticipate any more than one to two sections per grade level across the district at the elementary level. Depending on the final opt-in numbers, we all, we need to keep in mind, there may be the possibility of a need for a multi-age elementary classroom. For instance, to give that an example, let's say we have eight first graders who indicate they would like to be remote. For instance, to give an example, let's say we have eight first graders who indicate they would like to be remote. That we cannot give a dedicated teacher to eight students. But if we have eight first graders and 11 second graders, now we have 19. We have a small in-person classroom. Those numbers correlate to what our kindergarten class sizes have been the last several years. And it is not uncommon in the educational world, or even in District 158's somewhat recent history, to have multi-age classrooms and one teacher working with two grade levels. Again, our preference is to have a teacher per grade level. But, and when people are making their decisions, we want them to be as informed as possible before they take that fully committed survey. The big change for elementary is that we will have live specials and it won't be solely asynchronous. We are anticipating that one of our special teachers in each of those categories will have a remote section and be able to service those grade levels and have that regularly be a part of their day. On the middle school, now, middle school and high school, there's a lot of differences. But middle school, we take on a remote academy concept. Again, early identification of these students is really important so that we can build things out, depending on the numbers. But core classes will be scheduled into district-wide remote sections. Meaning, a Heinemann sixth grade teacher, teaching math, will be teaching both Heinemann and Marlo sixth graders. And then potentially, a Marlo sixth grade literacy teacher could be teaching both sections, depending on their numbers and how we can work numbers in the team so that class sizes can work out. Because students in person have to, that teacher will be one of their teaching sections. So one of their, their six teaching sections in middle school will be dedicated to an online and we'll build it as best we can across the grade level regardless of the building. Again, numbers will determine how many sections per grade level are needed. If the opportunity presents itself to have, you know, one team handle that, then there's an increased level of collaboration, which is a positive thing. Middle schools will return to the nine-periods day structure. Now, that was a question in the past from Mrs. Meyerino. We will not maintain the block schedule at either building, at either level, but for now, middle school. Numbers are going to determine how the remote needs and specialized courses will be met. And you think about exploratories here, the next one. Project, our new project Lead the Way Exploratory is not feeling that it's lending itself very well to a remote option because of the hands-on nature and the volume of in-person versus a smaller remote section. While it may still work out, but there may be a limited number of selections of what can be offered in terms of our exploratories. All students don't take every exploratory every year anyway. In this particular year, we may be forced of what we, depending upon what we can offer. And then, as I mentioned, they'll return to their typical nine-period schedule and remove themselves from the block. Now, the high school is even more different and this is where some people have been confused. So I want to go through this slowly. You would need to view this in three different layers. And I'm going to try and bridge this and make the connections and build out a student's schedule when I finish. Layer one is our preference. We will do everything we can to schedule students in our new online courses that our teachers are preparing to build this summer. Dr. Schlitzer, in the next agenda item of tonight's meeting, is going to go into detail about where we are with that online learning platform and what that's going to look like. But the first layer is taking District 158 courses, built by District 158 teachers, and building them in an asynchronous online format. I say asynchronous and the detail about to take too much of Dr. Schlitzer's thunder here, but research shows that asynchronous for online, totally online courses is best practice. We've been working with our research partner, EAB, to build that research background as to why we're going to approach something and that training will obviously come to our teachers in support of that. So we had, you know, 30-something teachers express interest in building an online course. Depending on where we go, we'll have a list of District 158-built online courses that will be that first layer. Layer two will be dedicated remote sections. That's what we've experienced this year. If we have so many sections of geometry, we'll have that many, needed, we'll have that many remote sections of a teacher's schedule dedicated to that as well. Layer three is something that will be new to our, another new option to our online system, which is an online platform outside of District 158, more like a Play-Doh or EdMentum, which is a third-party online course platform. We would be allowing students, if we can't schedule you in District 158-created online courses or get you in remote sections, the third-party online option, which will most likely be reserved for electives or singleton electives. We can get a course or like course to allow and meet that graduation requirement through a third party. So what that means is the student's schedule who goes remote will be extremely flexible in that it'll be made up of online courses that are anytime, anywhere, with some regular check-ins with teachers in a synchronous manner. But predominantly, you can do it whenever it meets your schedule. Remote sections, which will be scheduled during the day and live instruction daily in that remote section. And online, third-party courses to make, to round out the seven classes that a student takes, dependent on their need. And again, the high school returns to that eight-period day and will not maintain the block structure. Want to go back to middle school very briefly. Numbers will determine the remote needs for specialized courses. An example here is we teach high school, or high school credit in some of our middle school classes. So a student that's in geometry or Algebra I in middle school, or Spanish I in middle school, or English I in middle school, if the numbers don't dictate a middle school section, those students taking high school courses can be placed in a high school remote section, which is the same content, the pace is almost identical, and the credit is exactly the same. And in a remote world, there's obviously no busting needs or anything like that. I wanted to be sure I was clear about that. So factors impacting some of our remote programming. The number of students at each grade level and the individual course schedules of those students will impact programming decisions. So we have to have enough students in order to run those remote sections, as I said. And some of the schedules, you know, it's a numbers game. We have to go get a commitment sometime in the near future. Remote learning at all levels will be different than it was this year. Elementary, the live special being added, and the district-wide sections. Middle school, you may not be, if you're on, you know, Marlo, take Don the Hatty, was just here, Marlo 8-1, you may be experiencing, you may not, you're not going to be associated with a team necessarily in the middle school in either building because you could have Heinemann and Marlo teachers making out your remote schedule. And in the high school, the three layers as I expressed. Some elective classes may be offered only for in-person. As I mentioned, youth residency is an example, some of our computer science courses. The hands-on like woodshop classes are going to be challenged. Some can be offered. We've gone through, identified those and are prepared to share those with families about what their interests are. And eliminated as many as we could and will be, you know, will be as accommodating as possible to make it work, but at some point, we just can't do it. And then students electing remote may have to shift their schedule because they've already registered for classes as a part, they started that in January. They may have to relook at their electives of what they can take and choose maybe a fourth or fifth alternative based on can we offer it and how will that work? And then students opting for remote at the secondary level will need to take some classes via an online platform. So I mentioned that the edgenuity, that's a third party, it's anytime, anywhere learning, giving you flexibility in your day, but it's not a District 158 teacher that you'll be working with. A District 158 teacher can offer some support and replace you in the classes and help if you run into problems, but it's still, it's a third-party online platform. And then students electing remote, if something changes and while we'll be asking you to make a commitment for the entire year, we do recognize that circumstances do come up where a change has to occur. And if that does occur, they need to expect that their schedule will probably change and teachers will definitely change. So next steps, we'll be sending out the commitment survey very soon. Families will be asked to commit for the entire school year. As we looked at this and have managed the in-and-out process at the high school especially, but in all of the buildings really, it's not possible for that to continue. So if, you know, if you're going to go remote, you need to make the, we're asking families to make the decision of, there's a very distinct reason why I'm doing this and I'm prepared to make this decision for the entire school year. Based on our opt-in results, staffing plans, and final models, our goal is to be back here in a month. The June committee of the whole, I'm going to update you as to where we are and how those remote sections broke down. And then we'll begin preparing and implementing our plan over the summer. Kindergarten and transfer students are obviously not in these survey results, but as they register, they'll be given the survey and can express their interest in remote learning and learn about what our options are and make their commitment to join if that's, if they choose. So with that, I'll answer any questions. And I'm happy to go back and go through certain specifics if necessary.
Any questions to give to the committee?
I've got a little bit of a question first. Any questions, Bill?
Okay. Sorry. I'm concerned about the opt-ins for the entire year. And it's such a huge decision to make, considering everything that we've gone through this last year, to make that kind of commitment for an entire school year. And it just concerns me to have that, trying to have that much foresight for an entire school year.
Well, as I said earlier, make a little more detail. I think that, you know, the way we've looked at it is having lived through this for an entire school year and then the fourth quarter of last year, you know, our families are pretty certain where they are, we believe. And by next week, a vaccine will be available for all of our secondary students. And then thinking, you know, I say that because the commitment for the entire year at the secondary level is where our concern really lives. Because we've seen our high school students trying and go remote and then come back when they want to try it again and go remote. And it taxes the system to a level that the quality of service that we're able to provide them suffers. And if our preference, we believe, I mean, we still believe that in-person instruction is the best quality instruction that we can provide. And our online path is to dip your toe in in high school to prepare you beyond. And in certain circumstances, maybe have more courses or even an entire load, but not the majority of our students to do so. So our in-person offerings still are the very best that we have. And, you know, our buildings, it takes an awful lot to constantly be juggling in and out. Plus, then we're impacting class size. And how we're able to staff these remote options will really create some challenges if students are coming in and out of those sections and a section dwindles down to six or seven. And now all those students are in the building and how that impacts the teacher's ability to maintain a steady class size and not going, getting too big. There's challenges there that, most importantly, we feel that our families are to a point where if they're going to be remote, that they can make that decision for the year. But I understand the concern and I know it is a big commitment. And having our families go through some of the decisions we've asked them to make this last year, I know that they're going to struggle with that. And they'll reach out and we're here to support them and help them answer any of their questions and walk through that. And there are, as I said, there will be extenuating circumstances. But at the same time, we have to, we feel we have to be able to function and serve them the best that we can. And the in-and-out nature of what we've experienced this spring, if Dr. Belem is still here, he would tell you how overwhelming it's been for their system.
Just, I can hijack a question for a follow-up. But the, is it fair to say that going from live to online as a potential switch is easier than the other way around? And if that's true, could that be kind of part of the pitch, so to speak, as a question? I mean, hey, if you're not ready to commit online full-time all year, can you kind of hedge your bet and go, perhaps you could come, go from live to online? Because, you know, under my presumption, that it would be logistically easier to do.
Well, in this year's environment, it was easier to go from in-person to remote because of the nature of the transition and the fewer schedules that had to be adjusted. My only hesitation, Mr. Gentry, comes from the same level of management that is required to support our families to that, to the level that we expect. And I think that when they, I expect that when they return in person, it's going to be, you know, I do expect that masks will still be required by the state of Illinois for us to wear while we're in building. But I am anticipating that our distancing is going to go away. And the experience in our building will return to the student experience they had in 2019 with the addition of the math and hopefully different quarantine rules. So I'm not answering your question very well, but I think that our ability to service our families really well is, I'm fearful that that's going to take a hit if we're spending all of our time managing them back and forth between modalities. If Illinois is ready to be in Phase 5, we need to be in school. It's really kind of the bottom line of where we are. But at the same time, we recognize that some of our families are still very fearful of this pandemic or have real health concerns that they're trying to manage and protect their family from. And if a vaccine isn't available for our youngest kids, I don't know how we tell them they can't do that. Well, that's what a lot of our, a lot of our colleagues around the suburbs are not offering this as an open option. It's medical note required. But we, I don't think, we're not prepared to be there yet because I don't, we don't want to dictate that to our families. We want, you know, that choice has been such an important part of this entire year. We're going to try and maintain that as best we can. But when you make a choice, we need you to make one.
To reiterate your initial answer, I think it's more along the lines of with a 10-ish percent that would be interested, their reasons and logic are likely to change or fluctuate.
That's our, that's our expectation.
Okay. I'm starting to fall.
That's okay. And that 10%, how was that scattered? Because I don't expect that's an equal distribution amongst all the grades. I wish, I'd like to be focused in clusters.
I'll have to phone a friend on that and I believe the majority of it was at the high school.
High school, okay.
But I don't know if Dr. Schlitzer or Ms. Lombard has more specific details about how the breakdown works. We may need to revisit that in just a moment.
And that's okay. But I'm just curious if that's, if that's focused in one area or one level of grades or not. Like I said, I don't expect it to be equally distributed amongst 12 different grades. I'm just intuitively would expect it to be clustered somehow.
I believe the percentage was higher at the high school than it was at the lower grade.
It was.
Truthfully, about half of that 10% is high school.
I'm sorry?
About half of the 10% is high school.
Is high school.
Just looking quickly at the numbers, roughly half of the 10% is with the high school.
Thank you.
Yes, I'll just open it up. Other questions people have?
I guess, my only question is, you know, I mean, I kind of agree with Mr. Troy. It's like, you know, you want them to make a commitment kind of before we may see that Phase 5. So, and I get it, we have to come up with plans, but do you expect that we'll see more turning to online because of that? And then your other comment in there was about the mask, that mask portion, and you were surprised by that amount? So if we're still unsure, which I think you're right, I think we are going to be wearing masks next year, do you suspect to see higher numbers of online? And if so, are we comfortable with that?
I think, I actually expect our numbers to be less to commit for an entire year than what expressed interest. I think the details of what we shared and the news, because when we sent this survey, that was prior to the announcement by the FDA that 12 years and older vaccinations were right around the corner. Well, we weren't anticipating it being that quickly. And I think that for our high school population, yeah, 16-plus is available. But now you're talking, you know, sixth through 10th grade now having access to a vaccine. I think we'll see that number come down quite a bit. And I also think that, you know, the commitment for a year is a deterrent for some. And we have to acknowledge that, that we need you to be serious about the decision that you're making and not have the expectation that you can come in and out at will. Because, like I said, we want to provide the very best level of service we can for our students and families, regardless of what you choose. And going back and forth, it taxes the system to a point And going back and forth, it taxes the system to a point that that suffers. And we don't like, we don't like that. We don't, you know, our, our, our process throughout our school district is, is, is an experiential one. It's one that we, I personally place a high value on the experiences and opportunities we can provide our kids. And when they leave, and they form so many great relationships, I don't want that to suffer because they get frustrated with the in and out. And that's what's been happening. I mean, we saw tonight with our retirees, this is, your relationships are who we are. And we want to form them with every single level of, of service to our students, their families and the staff. So it's all, all, all in, in that equation.
One more. To that end, if, if students opt to be remote and if there is that high of a number that ends up happening at the high school, how do we handle extracurricular activities then?
So that's a good question. We'll handle it very similar to, to the way it's handled with homeschool students. A student who is homeschooled currently has a right to participate in, in athletics. And we'll have to handle it that way. That's been some of the, some of the greatest concern with our, with our high school teachers is, you know, will someone opt to be remote and then still want to, to play sports? Well, technically, they, they have the ability to do that. Our concern is, like what we're experiencing right now as a part of the quarantine crisis, as we're calling it, is, is our families are opting to go remote to protect their ability to play those sports instead of being caught up in, in, in a close contact. And I, unfortunately, I understand it because I, I'm on the record for disagreeing with how the state of Illinois has been handling this quarantine situation and it's negatively impacting it. But theoretically, Mr. Troy, if you're, if you're going to play especially a high-contact sport, a high-risk sport, you should be in-person. But by law, we have to offer that as a, if you're in a homeschool environment.
Thank you.
I also want to echo my concern with, with the commitment for the year. Again, I understand it because there are so many uncertainties out there, like we talk about with the mask, what's going to happen with quarantine. And that was one of my questions was where, where are we, you know, leaning or where we're headed with regards to that because of the trend that we are seeing with people wanting to avoid that in and out. Next year with the, you know, in-person, if a student is sick, if a student does come down with a COVID, will there still be that option then to zoom into their class? That will still be there?
It will have to be, yes. Zoom, zooming when you're while quarantined will, will have to be a part of, of our life for at least the next year.
Okay.
We, we, you know, we don't want that to be a daily occurrence for our teachers because the quality of instruction does not meet our standard and the quality of learning is not what we want for our kids. But the reality is there's, there's not an option to then shift them to a, a different remote teacher. There's the, the, the ability to be on the same page from class to class is just not there and the, the experience with, students would suffer.
I realize that's exhausting, but for our teachers, it's a lot to take on, but I think it's important that that remain intact because it would be hard to leave a student hanging out there with no place to go for instructions.
Yeah, I, I do, I agree with you. And, and one of the things that, that you all should know, that we've heard from our elementary teachers especially, and is, is that it's a, it's the biggest struggle for them, for our in-person elementary teachers, when a student is quarantined and wants to log on and zoom that very first day because they may not have planned for it. And what we're seeing in a lot of our elementary classrooms, they're, they're, they're operating with, with, with more pen and paper, more hands-on activities. And a teacher is, spends a considerable amount of time shifting their preparation to allow for an online student for the fully in-person classroom. And so one of the, you know, one of the, the ways that we've been working with them is, is those things, I experienced it in, in my own family this week, was, was that first day, you're going to be home and, and be sick if needed or, and we'll, we'll email you any work or check on the Otis tiles for any work. And then the next day, you zoom in as an active participant to give the teacher the ability to properly prepare. Because if, if they've only prepared for hands-on in-person learning and you're zooming in, now I've got a, a seven or eight-year-old watching and they, they can't do anything that I've prepared for and they can't turn it on the fly to then put it online. So that's some of the, some of the things that we've learned this spring that we'll take, they'll carry with us into the fall as we transition into when we deal with the quarantine.
My next question is with regards to the third-party online classes. Will those providers be required to follow any IEP and 504 accommodations?
It's a good question, yes. You know, we, we are taking that specific, specifically into account as we're, as we're selecting them. And that's been one of the, the vetting process, particularly for Edge annuity and why we liked it, was it did have, did allow for IEP considerations and accommodation.
Excellent. I think that, that covered my questions along with everything that's been asked so far. So thank you.
Sure thing.
I just have a couple. Thank you. The, for the remote sections of elementary, I guess for all grades next year, is that voluntary for a teacher? How are you going to handle what teacher, are teaching those sessions? Is it, is it a remote volunteer?
We'll start that way and we'll, we'll put it out for, for teachers to express interest voluntarily and take that as far as we possibly can before we have to assign.
Okay. And then at the high school, if you're remote, I'm assuming you can still do the AP classes and dual credit as well?
We have to, we rely on MCC and their ability to do so, but yes.
Okay. And so if, in the, at the elementary level, if they're remote, how are they getting their services, OT and PT and speech, things like that?
We'll handle that on a case-by-case basis, but as, as, you know, as we discussed either last month or in late April, we started the walk-in services. And when you're talking about supporting the various, you know, essentially 10% or 11% of 10%, those individualized plans on, on coming in for services or coordinating, obviously they'll all be available via Zoom as they have been, but if, if that's not, students not progressing meeting that goal, then we'll, we'll personalize it for them, for sure.
Yeah, I, I feel like that was one of our biggest challenges this year, trying to provide that in a remote basis. We all know that OT and PT remotely does not work as well. So I'd like to see that walk-in at the very least continue. So that's, that's all I have.
What can I add?
Yeah. So numbers-wise and stuff, elementary, I'm thinking remote, you can dedicate teachers specifically to remote. But it's not going to happen though, this is middle and high school. I mean, you're not going to have, I mean, the way.
Not full-time dedication. Maybe one section of their day or two sections of their day. They'll be doing both.
So they'll be doing, they'll be doing.
We'll consolidate it as much as we possibly can because obviously we want them living in, in, in one world. It's easier for their planning and they can be more effective that way, but it, it may not be possible.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just thinking through the houses and how you're going to, there's not going to be enough of them.
Right.
Only have two or three sessions possibly and then they're going to do in-person. Okay. Just making sure in my head that.
So if I could ask you a couple, a, a question or two myself, a, a couple of you have, have brought it up about the commitment. Would you be more comfortable if it was a, a commitment at the semester versus the year? I mean, I've kind of sold my, or given my case, made my case for why the year-long commitment is important to us, but I want to be sure we accurately, you know, hear your, your concerns with that. The, the concerns of, that I would have with a semester change, it has to happen at a grading period or a, a, a logical break. But my concern with that would be is, are we, are we going to be able to handle, it's got to be almost, it's almost got to be one way. Where if you, if you no longer want to be remote, you're coming in-person. Because we can't handle an, an outflux of people wanting to go from in-person to remote because we are, again, we're not going to have the sections that are already created and dedicated for it. It, it'll create a real logistical problem. And with our end goal of being back to quote-unquote "normal" of physical attendance in school every day by all of our students, I think we, we were getting to the point where we're going to have to start drawing the line pretty soon. Obviously, we want to be flexible, but that's, that's some of the feedback I could use from you with, because I've heard it from a few of you, but I, we can.
I have the same angst as they do about it, but I mean, I, I think it's a tough commitment for a full year, but if you're saying the, you know, structuring school in a, in a way that is not disruptive to the masses, I mean, to the larger masses on that makes more sense. I mean, that's, that's what makes sense. I feel bad that they, they, you know, it's such a long-term commitment on it, but I mean, that's, like you said, if the structuring of this, but if it's, if there's a way to do it that's a little more seamless to go in and out at semester, I mean, I'd prefer to have them be able to make a choice for the semester at a time.
We can explore, we can explore that and discuss the implications at least.
Another thing that comes to my mind is, within the survey itself, could you gauge it tough? I mean, devil in the details as far as what that question or question would be, but maybe what is that? What is that level of angst for the, I mean, it's anticipated, say, just for argument's sake, that 10% is a good number for people who would be interested. To me, like the smaller that number is, the more likely they're going to be dedicated or bought into their decision more so. So how can you gauge that level of commitment? Meaning if I'm 75% committed, I have to make a call, I'm going to say, yes, I'm going for both of the whole year. If I'm 50% committed, I'm, you know, I can, I can go either way.
Man, our hope is.
Survey, like survey science can figure out what, you know, how far on that decision spectrum people are or not.
And our, our hope is, is that, that the decision that people will make will be based on how, how things went for them this year. And if they were, you know, if there's a, a serious health concern, I think that's, that's fox one of, of, they're, they're ready to commit for, for the year if that's the case. If, if they have that concern or they're, they're apprehensive about life outside and in the back and, and still being in the pandemic and they've been successful remote, I think that, that makes it a little easier for them to make that, that long-term commitment. I think the concern lies for, they haven't been really successful in, in remote and they were more successful in-person, but they're still not quite ready. That's a tough group. That's a really tough group. And, and that's the group that, that we envision being flexible with. And I mean, you, you all know how, how we operate in this school district. We're, we're accommodating to the, to, to a fault almost. We want to, we want our, as I said, the experience of our students and their families to be, be positive. And we want to give them everything that they want. I just think, you know, we, we're going to need at minimum a full semester commitment without a lot of wiggle room and ideally the full year. But I, I understand, we, we have the same, same concerns about it's a long time to commit for. It is, when, when there's a lot of unknowns.
Yeah, I think I throw my name on the list of.
You're at 75, I assume?
Huh?
You're at 75, I assume?
You know, it's, it's, it's the concern that jumps out. And if, and to Tony's point, if you can make a choice at the semester, all else equal, that's preferable, but it's that, that trade-off of how, how disruptive it can be. And I think we'll know more about that how disruptive question based on what comes back from the survey.
But you know, I think one of the things that, that we, we have to call out, and I, and I, you know, I certainly have jinxed us in this, in this situation in the past. I don't, hope it doesn't happen now, but for anyone that's concerned about being in school, you know, we've, this, since we've been back full-time, we have not had a single case of school transmission in the building. The transmissions from a positive to a close contact have come from high-risk sports, the bus, not, not even the bus, high-risk sports and then outside activities that because they're quarantined because they're sitting close, which is, which is the basis of, of mine and superintendents all over the state of Illinois' frustration with Izzy's urgent to get us back into school by saying sit three feet apart, but our quarantine rules of six feet are still going to be the standard. We have currently 34 students in our school district, or 34 people in our school district in the last two weeks that have tested positive and not a single one have transmitted that to someone while in our building, but it resulting in hundreds of quarantines. So the, the possi, the possibility of, of transmitting in school as long as we have this on and we're washing our hands and, and doing everything we are now are a part of our daily life, we feel really good about being back in school and, and the student experience returning to quote-unquote "normal" of going through our, our, our school system with the mitigations that we have in place and are very confident in what we can provide in terms of level of safety. So, you know, I hope that the families that like to be remote are, are, they, they have a, need to make a decision that's good for them. They ought to feel really good about what, what we're doing in the building and feel comfortable about being back. And I hope that that is the direction we go very, very soon.
So I can repeat that now for you, so I can hear it, hear it out loud for sure. So the guidance says you can be within three feet of each other, but if you're within six feet of someone who is exactly, you're quarantined.
That's 100% correct. It is, isn't it?
Yeah.
I'll share that, you know, today I sent a, a letter signed by every superintendent in, in the county to, to Dr. Ayala, the state superintendent, to Jesse Reeves, the deputy governor, and I'm awaiting on appropriate contact at IDPH to get to Dr. Ezekiel to express our collective wish for change. Superintendent, all of the superintendents, or the vast majority of the superintendents in DuPage County sent the exact same letter. We're working on, on spreading that campaign just to, to let them know that as schools, their, their positive intent is having a negative impact.
It's a glaring inconsistency.
It is.
It just doesn't make, on the surface, it doesn't make sense at all.
Right. The only other question I had was just, for us, we had an internal debate on phase five and the impact on this and what does that mean for offering a remote option? The likely availability of increased vaccine for at least 12-plus and hopefully by the end of the summer, all school-aged children? Does that, does that impact your willingness or interest in offering that remote option for this next school year? Or are you still feeling very good, like it's, it's necessary and you should be doing it, not restricting it to just a medical note? I've kind of gathered that, that you think it's necessary, but I want to be sure we're on the same page.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out what the critical mass is, is 10% critical mass enough to feel like you should be offering?
And that, I mean, part of the decision of why that makes it a worthwhile question is there is a, there is a staffing component to it, that we will be spending and investing dollars to make this work. And we've, we've been debating that internally. We want our families to have, you know, what they want, but there's a cost to it.
That and then the, the other side of this, I'm, I'm trying to envision, I mean, guessing you've already sounded it, is with 90% back and still having three feet spacing, are we able to do that?
That's exactly why we're waiting for a formal commitment to returning or work on the remote side because that, that takes a lot more of the work. But we need the state of Illinois to, to tell us that three feet, no problem. We can do that in the classrooms. It's six feet at lunch that we have to have, that, that has to be eliminated in order for us to be able to, to really, really function and, and come back.
At those, at those levels.
Yeah, our, our top priorities are elimination of, of the, the quarantine. But in order to open, the six feet at lunch have to go. We want the quarantine numbers to reflect the reality of at least three feet, preferably just the infected individual and, and the bus. And the bus.
Any update on the bus?
We're going to talk a little bit later, later tonight.
Fair enough.
Absolutely.
My, my answer to your question is yes, yes, the availability of vaccines and the depths and breadth of that availability, I think it would have had my opinion, but I don't know, I don't know what that circumstance is to say, well, what, what type of impact would that be? I know it would have had, but I don't know.
We had a similar debate of, of if the vaccine is available, you, you get it for your children or you choose not to, should that mean just come to school then? Because you have the availability of it and you chose not to? And that's where there was a weird line of, we didn't feel real comfortable, are we, should we be making that decision for our families? Which is why we're here still presenting this to you tonight.
And it's, it almost implies you have to, you have to pursue that path. Because I don't think even in a full vaccination availability environment, you're going to have full vaccination and availability, just for the, you know.
Sure. I think Illinois crossed one-third of the state fully vaccinated just, just this week. And I know it's a tough decision. And I know it's a tough decision for families with their children. I know that's going to be, uh, even harder for them.
Yeah, I mean, I, I honestly don't see a scenario where you get more than 70% vaccination. Well, I did be, even probably hot on the high side. There, there's going to be 25, 30% that absolutely will not do it.
It's tapered off so much that McKinley County is now, it's, it's walk-in available. You no longer need an appointment to be vaccinated as an adult. So it's, it slows quite a bit.
Hi, welcome to our question. In the survey, you said 12% said they would choose a remote option because it's a better, better learning set of students. 11, social, emotional, oh, you know, 23%. Where is that number coming from? Is that, do we know if that's again higher at secondary with just being a better learning environment? Because that better learning environment and social, emotional, they could intertwine. Um, if you had to answer that, one could, you could say it's a better learning environment because they're, they're not worried about what's happening in school. So you look at that number, but is that coming from six and 12? Or is that the younger ones? Do we know that?
I don't have that level of detail. I don't know if Dr. Budzinski appears to be efforting it, but, uh-
Yeah, it's, it's actually spread through in general about half of the folks, as Dr. Rose said, about half of the folks that said they'd like to stay remote were from the high school. There's 451 total from the high school. I will say that when we count them up, and I might be off by one or two, but it's only slightly over 80 families that, that said just better learning environment. Um, so, so really, when you think about the scale of that, um, this is what we've been struggling with, which is if, if we end up with the pandemic being removed as a concern, it's truly just, even so far as the survey is concerned, slightly over 80 families that have said they'd like to be remote for the entire district. So it is generally, um, at the high school level, a little higher on the remote side, presumably because I think families are a little more comfortable with older kids learning remotely than younger kids, which is very understandable. Um, but the scale is quite small. The scale is real small on that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Anything else? If I'm trying to think of what that, what the takeaway is, if any, is, you know, if you can get, I think your question back to us is a good one, and probably not fully answered one at this point, is what do we think about that 100% commitment? I think, you know, maybe, maybe just food for thought is that, you know, how do we phrase that, that survey to gauge, you know, something to that effect. I mean, more flexibility matters, but, you know, maybe get, use that survey contact as, maybe as a means to get more, more insight on that question as well.
Right, and, and, you know, just to, to total transparency, the conversation that we've had around this is, is, is that percentage coming from the people at school in our traditional sense doesn't work for? And, and how do we take that into account? And, you know, I've said to my team, to the, probably to a gaseum, is, you know, never let a good crisis go to waste. How are we going to, going to allow this crisis that we've been living in to change the educational system in Huntley 158 for the better in the long run?
Right.
And our internal debate that we're having is like, we can see how that happens um, through the online option at the high school that may eventually work its way to middle school some way, but our struggle is elementary. And we still have some families that are, are valuing that remote option at the elementary level. Yet fundamentally, we as educators all, all deeply believe as, as, as relationship-based beings, our elementary students need to be with us because of all that they learn about interacting with others, to socializing with others, and the value that that brings you as, as a human. We can't allow that to permeate through our whole system. Um, and they have to learn how to learn in order to be successful in owning their learning in that online environment. So it's a, it's a, it's a weird dynamic. We want to push the system as far as we can push it to change the educational system where it makes sense. But how, you know, for our youngest learners, we still need our hands on them. They still need to be here for the life beyond this pandemic at the elementary. It needs to, to look a whole lot like it did before, and some subtle changes, and let the wholesale systemic change happen at the upper grades. But that's an internal battle that we've, we've been debating throughout the construction of this whole process.
Okay.
So just food for thought.
Okay. Anything else before we carry that extremely thorough and detailed dovetail into the next related topic?
So, one more. Is it possible, is there, is there a scenario under which you can see this stopping mid-year?
At certain grade levels, yes. If an elementary classroom begins to, wants to come back at, at a big enough rate to the point where we look at a multi-age classroom, I mean, that now we can pull a teacher back in, in person, um, it's certainly possible. I mean, if you take yourself back to last March, remember we're going to flatten the curve in two weeks? I think we, we, we don't think, you know, stopping in December is, is not a high likelihood. I think by the time we get to October, we're going to hit that 50 and 60% of the population being vaccinated. And now what's life like as we enter flu season again? When it, when it ramped up this last year will be a, a telltale, uh, a big sign for us about what life is going to be like moving forward. Um, we also don't know what level or, or how long our immunity is going to last for those of us who were vaccinated until we need a booster. Um, and there probably will be that period where we have to go to test that of, of when it wears off and you start seeing more vaccinated people turning up positive again before they realize that booster, I, I have, I have fingers crossed they're already prepping and testing for that. I want that figured out before I need a booster. Um, but that's, those are all factors in the unknown of living through this. And, um, you know, none of us have ever experienced this, so we kind of have to-
Well, and, and because one of the things that's been, to me, abundantly clear is, is that our knowledge has obviously, of this situation has escalated from where we entered the February, March of last year. The information that has just continued to evolve at a faster and faster pace to where we have a better understanding of what we need to do, how we need to do it, and what options are available. And I could see if, if that knowledge continues to evolve and, and we get to a point where we say, okay, maybe we ju-, we can't justify this any further, or there is enough here to transition mid-year despite what people may have wanted, we can't justify it in full, in full, uh, propriety.
And I can, I can tell you that if we transition mid-year at the elementary level, it will be pretty seamless. The negatives that could occur, I say negatives, not negatives. The, the challenges that would occur for a family is if your teacher in a district-wide elementary section, and say we're going to collapse that back into the building, you may not be able to go to your home school. And, and so that's a thought, because if we have Leggie, Conley, and Martin students in one section, it's, it's totally dependent upon class size of where those students can go in their home school. We have room for them, and we would figure, we have to figure out the transportation side of things. But those are, those are some of the obstacles we would have to overcome versus staying remote. Um, and that, you know, we'll, we'll tackle those when we, when we face them. Um, because like, like I said, if someone's choosing remote, that's why the long-term commitment is important, and we're, they're doing so for a reason. So, uh, but some of those factors are, will be a challenge. And if you're in mid-semester in an online course, you know, you, you aren't just going to drop your virginity course that you're halfway through to come back in person. So that break at a grading point is, is really, really vital.
Thank you.
Your book?
Good.
All right, Dr. Slicker, you're going to be up next. You got to be shorter than me.
The next contestant in the brevity contest will be?
Well, actually, this, this sort of sets up, and we discussed kind of doing it in this order. Um, I'll practice this by saying, as, as Dr. Rowe mentioned, it can sometimes get a little confusing, easy to get mixed up, because we're talking about a full remote program, and how are we going to look at that programming for next year? And what I'm about to discuss, our, our online courses, is that first layer of that program. So if we just kind of like hold that in your heads, this is something that with staff, even with ourselves as we're talking, um, we just need to keep kind of holding that together. So in, uh, I guess the infinite wisdom of our community and our strategic planning process last year, if you recall, immediately prior to COVID, we had the large forums and we identified, you know, priorities. We chose our measures, and one of the measures that we chose, uh, is there at, um, it's at the top of your packet. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen just so we can kind of all walk down through it together. Um, so even before we knew anything was going to happen with the pandemic, we chose a strategic plan target that said a comprehensive online education program and implementation plan for high school courses will be constructed and presented to the board by year end. Um, and then, of course, COVID hit, and we thought, well, okay, we've got the strategic plan measure. In its inception, this measure was intended, as you're thinking about our blended courses, if we think about this, we have several lanes at the high school. The lanes can be somewhat seamless, right? We have students that seamlessly transition between blended and traditional classes. And this could be just, um, in a normal year, just an additional lane where a student might take one or two online classes, a blended class, and the rest traditional. So that was the original sort of vision and intention. And I think beyond the COVID years, uh, where we might need remote learning, I think that will persist. So if we look at what our, our actual vision, our preferred future is, is that, um, in line with this measure, students in District 158 will have the opportunity to personalize their learning place and pace, so their location, and then having it be self-paced, um, via online course options, providing additional options to meet students' needs. And just that little graphic there, kind of showing how there's a continuum between those traditional fully in-person classes, blended classes, and then online learning classes. We also have that fourth lane of our competency-based program Vanguard, which we know is a school within a school. So you see the arrow stops, because that one's more of a self-contained school within a school program. But we really keep aspiring in our, in our innovation focus to add additional options for kids, for things that will meet their needs. And so that's where this initially came from. However, what we know is that now that we, um, have the pandemic and we know that we are going to have these remote needs for next year, this online course programming that we're building will serve an even more important need for next year, and we believe it will scale for out-years. And so the goals of really building these would be to meet the strategic plan target, develop a scalable system that could expand, uh, to include more options in future years. If you think about how our blended learning program grew, it was organic, right? We started it with an idea, people raised their hands, three classes, yep, we're going to try them. And little by little, it grew based on its own success. We improved it. So if we think about that model, um, that's essentially the model that we'll use, but we know that this first year is going to have a higher need. And we've also learned so much about different learning modalities over the last year that we're probably going to start a little bit stronger than we maybe would have in that blended, uh, 10 years ago. Um, so we also know that it's going to serve a need in specific subject areas, specifically for pandemic-related remote learning needs. But even beyond that, in any given year, the online classes that we have will be able to provide options for kids that have trouble learning in the building or need an additional option. So for some, for some students, it would be, I really have to work. I contribute to my family. So if we schedule these at the beginning or the end of the day, a student might be able to take two online classes and free up some time so that they could do that self-paced. And then at the end of the day, they're able to do some of their work or, or go to their job. Or we have a competitive gymnast, for example, who might not be physically present all the time, might have that heavy, um, training load. We have those students with school anxiety where a full day in person might just be difficult. But perhaps if they could have that more autonomous, just with check-ins for part of the day, it could work for them. So we know we have students that can just use an additional option. And so that's the other sort of goal that we have with this, and that would be regardless of the pandemic. The framework we're going to use, as Dr. Rowe mentioned, we've been working with EAB, who are our research partners, and they've really helped us by putting together a, a ton of research, um, related to best practices and fully online learning for high school students, which is different, similar, but, but there's some differences with, um, post-secondary, which a lot of folks are, are familiar with. So the courses will be flexible, they'll be self-paced. Core instruction will align with the best practices, which is, um, a foundational model of asynchronous with frequent and appropriate synchronous check-in. So where that will look different is than our remote sections from this year, for example, it wouldn't be log-on during second period, you're sitting at home and I'm teaching you just like we're in person, but you're there and I'm here. It truly would be built out in that asynchronous self-paced model with the check-ins and also asynchronous student interaction. So things like discussion boards, many of us have taken really good online programming from universities, and it's, it's a similar model. At your place, you see I've compiled some of the research, and, um, I have more. I can send you the electronic version as well so that you can access those links. But it just kind of sums up, um, really an interesting part of the research that, that we focused on in looking at this is the, actually, in an online class, a fully online class, too much teacher direction actually hampers learning as much as too little, because the learners truly do need time to do the learning. So the actual processing in their head and the self-paced nature of it, um, actually is benefited by it being asynchronous. And so, so those pieces are going to be very carefully monitored and built. And we just wanted to sort of share that framework with you. Um, the teachers that volunteer will be receiving that professional learning during the summer as they're building it. And of course, just like blended, will be getting better as we go. So for year one, our initial implementation, this is really the part that, um, it may look a little different than it would have without the pandemic. Um, because we would have always had a first year, we're trying out some classes, here's our first year. We're going to enroll students and, and use those classes as our first year implementation. But this year, we know that the pandemic might end up putting more students into those courses and have a higher demand than we might otherwise have in the first year. So our target audience will be students who opt for remote learning because of COVID, students who have difficulty learning in the building for whatever reason, um, students who can't attend in person for long periods of time, again, for whatever reason. And there's multitudes of reasons why that might apply to an individual student. Um, some students might wish to take more electives, and we do have some of those, right? A student that wishes to take more electives in their day, and so they want to structure their day and take an additional course. I don't anticipate we'll have a lot of those right out of the gate in the first year. But we just have student, we have so much choice at Huntley High School. It's a blessing, but it's, it's also difficult, because we have those highly motivated students that want to do so much more than you can fit into eight periods. Um, and then some students might just opt for online courses on an à la carte basis because it meets their needs in some other way. Um, and so long-term, I think it really is helpful to hold our blended model in mind, just in the sense that students choose that. We know there's some students that we also counsel away from choosing that if it's not appropriate for them, or if they've demonstrated it's difficult to learn in that model. But, um, we anticipate that long-term, this will be a permanent lane, it might grow larger, and our students will be able to flexibly access these courses in ways that work best for them. Again, this coming year, because of our, uh, potential remote learning because of the pandemic, we know there may be more students in there than what we would have otherwise had. So courses and scheduling, and we are finalizing that based on teacher proposals. As Dr. Rowe said, in our initial interest survey to staff, um, between 30 and 35 teachers raised their hand and said, I, either I would be interested in building one of these or hearing more about it or teaching one of these. When we really pared it down, um, we haven't quite finalized it yet, but we are going to have a good handful of classes in each subject area. There may be a few that are a little bit less. Uh, and that goes, I think, Ms. Melendi, to your question, I think it was, about teachers volunteering. For these courses, it will be based on teacher volunteers. Just like blended always has been, it's been a very, very good grassroots model that I think builds a lot of teacher support and teacher agency for that. We are focusing on core courses and high-density electives. So things, courses that we have a reasonable expectation will run. So for example, we have students in Algebra I. We're, we're reasonably likely to need an Algebra I online section, right? Based on next year, who might choose remote. Um, in terms of electives, we're looking at a couple of those higher incidence, um, electives, a couple in CTE, maybe a Spanish. But again, it depends on those teachers and the, and the volunteering. And we really want to check with them and make sure that they're ready to do it. Our, our teachers have worked really hard this year. Um, and, and I'm just amazed, actually, and very honored that so many of them have said they're interested in this. Um, and so we're really wanting to, to honor that and work, work hard with them to make, make their jobs a little easier. Um, we will be having, like we said, students with IEPs or in need of EL support that might need or want these classes. And so we would make sure that those appropriate supports were provided. Again, until we know who the students are, we won't know exactly what that structure needs to be. Um, but we would have that built into the system. It's been a part of every conversation. And then there would just be some scheduling considerations, and that would really be handled, you know, at the high school- you know, at the high school as they look at scheduling, which is classes potentially being grouped at the beginning and the end of the day. That makes a lot of sense, so students can kind of pollate their time, as well as giving teachers some common planning time if possible. Something that's real exciting is that we will be implementing a new learning management system for the purpose of these courses. So our current learning management system is Power School Learning, which is Haiku. It is, it is not a system that is designed for a fully online asynchronous environment. And I will tell you that the desire to learn is the company, D2L, and Bright Space is the system. It's actually the industry leader in K-12 for all online and blended learning in the last two years. Their, their industry stats are extremely impressive and they, they really are, are the leader in that. Actually, even we've had teachers that came to us and said, I just took a university course in this, it's fantastic. So we've had some presentations, we have chosen this one, and it is fully customizable. They will be working with us to build out custom templates for Huntley High School so that our teachers, as they're building them, will have that guide. And we're really going to try to get a lot of the front-end work off the backs of our teachers so that as they're building it, they can focus on their content. And there's also levels of customization. It's, it's one of those things where sometimes, if there's a system that does so much, it can be overwhelming. So there's some things that we can set automatically, and if, if there's a teacher that says, I want to do this, but I'm not ready to customize every little piece, we can set that for them. Or we might have some of those folks that say, I'm totally comfortable and I just want to dig in there and get in there and I want to customize everything. We can allow that to happen as well within our templates. It does also have a very robust parent portal that we were able to see demonstrated, as well as the student view. And so we're real confident that this will be a good system. It will be, it's a site license, so it will be available across the high school, but it will be targeted for use in these, in these classes. From an HR perspective, we are going to be following existing contract language regarding class sizes, regarding it will be a teacher's prep, it won't be one of a teacher's prep. So if they teach five classes, this would be one of them. It's exactly how we handle blended. And so from that perspective, our contract will be guiding those decisions. We will be also giving teachers the contractual stipends in order to create the class. And so these will actually fit very nicely into those existing systems. So our financial implications, and these have been placed into the budget, partially potentially covered by some of our FDR dollars to be able to support. So the cost of Bright Space in the first year, and this includes the full access for the high school, as well as all of our professional learning and custom-built templates, is 32,712. I will say that for all the out-years to maintain it, it's about 21,000, which is much, much lower than other comparable learning management systems, including Power School Learning. So it's, it's a, it's a reasonable support for these courses as a part of our strategic vision in the district. In terms of building the courses, depending how many are finalized, this is estimated to be between about 10 and 20 courses might be built. We'd be paying those one-time stipends, and it would be a total of potentially 15 to $21,000, just based on that stipend and how many teachers are doing it. That's the area in which, like I said, I, I feel like because of the pandemic, we may not be building, we would have not been building out quite so many in the first year, but there's that need. And if we have people stepping up to the plate and we have the resources to do it, we really want to make this available to kids. So that's still a little bit under construction, that will be finalized soon. And then last is just how are we going to measure this? And so for, for us, it's real important, I think, that we have those success measures set in advance. So we have to know what success looks like so that we can tell if it's working. So in the short term, obviously, we'll be looking at the number of credits that are earned compared to past students. We'll be looking at success in the next course in the sequence. And I want to emphasize that because a lot of times, a student might take a course and pack it, but it's actually the next course in the sequence of the subject area that we need to keep an eye on to make sure that they were properly prepared, so we're going to be continuing to evaluate that. Our growth data from standardized testing, and we are adding the STAR test in for the high school, so that will give us really good data to compare. And then long-term, our graduation rate, post-secondary success in these areas, also student feedback, clearly, just like we have gathered with blended. And we'll just be using a typical continuous improvement cycle. We planned it using a Plan Do Study Act process. So when we looked at how do we identify our needs, the do phase, which we're closely entering now, which is the courses will be designed, students will be enrolled, the courses will begin. And then we'll enter that study phase in winter, early winter, end of first semester, and going into January and February. We'll make some adjustments, and then we'll make sure that we keep rolling that continuous improvement cycle forward. I'm happy to provide updates on that as we go, to make sure that we're having that And then last of all, looking at the long-term implementation, we expect that we will learn a lot in the first year. We also expect that we'll be able to identify the best method for scaling the courses once we see some of those success metrics and we start to measure that. Looking at additional courses, additional teachers, which student populations does this work the best for, working with our counselors to make sure that the right students have access to it. And then just making sure that we have safeguards for quality instruction. Because for us, like we said in our guiding principles, even for our remote programming next year, that quality is extremely important. We want to make sure that's not compromised in the name of innovation. And then we'll just keep our eye on our other current programming, looking at if this online programming expands, what's the impact on other courses? Again, that's fairly standard for how we've expanded other programs, whether it be blended, whether it be Vanguard, just keeping an eye across HR, across technology, and making sure that we have the capacity for that expansion. So looking at this in sum, what we're really looking at, I think, is an extremely innovative long-term program that also luckily will help us meet a portion of our needs for this coming year that, that were due to the pandemic. But for us, we're really trying to focus on that long-term quality and how we're going to make sure that this is really just a robust part of our student experience at Huntley High School. So that's kind of the overview of our online course development, but I'd be happy to take any questions, whether it's about the specific implementation for next year or any of the long-term planning, any of the specifics.
Any questions? One of the, yeah. One of the messages that I remember being conveyed when we did the strategic plan, parents said we have lots of different software that we have to access for our students, and this is added another one.
Yep.
That's, I, I predict that will probably add to additional frustration. Is there, is there an impetus to do any kind of consolidation on that level?
Yeah, that's a great question. And I will say that at the high school level, that particular concern came through a little less strongly because our students are just in so many platforms anyway. Currently, our, our main platform is Power School Learning Haiku, but they actually use two additional other ones if they're into a credit or if they're in Project Leads Away. So this would be an additional one. Dr. Buzinski and I have actually been talking about that. The consolidation is something that is important and we always have our eye on, but it's kind of like that tipping point because it, it impacts so many teachers and students. For us to just pull a system out, that's, that, we want to make sure that there would be a transition and we've adequately tried it. We, we only did a, a one-year agreement with the company because we want to make sure that it's right. So what I would say is we always have our eye on that consolidation, and this is an additional system to, to make it good for these. And we'll just have to keep working on that support and communication. But we always are looking at streamlining.
One other thing to add to that, and it's, you bring up a great point. We do hear that from parents on a pretty regular basis that we're approaching a, a level of frustration that makes all of us uncomfortable with the number of systems that we have for parents. We have some solutions that we're working on that, just like we have single sign-on for our students to ease that burden, we're actually developing the tool now as a function of a product we already have to potentially make that option available for parents as well. It's not exactly the same as what we would have for students, but it's a big step in the right direction so that we can actually streamline and, and think of it as a, as a launchpad for parents, if you will, where we can give them icons to different systems. And once you enter credentials once, the system would then remember them in the future. So it's a giant step in the right direction to make that whole process much better for parents across the whole district. So we're really excited about working on that over the next several weeks. It's been a, a little bit of a development in progress for the past couple of months, but we think we'll be able to really move that forward.
And one other, on the flip side of that question, how much additional maintenance work or upkeep work is it for the district to, to deal with and maintain another system?
It's a fair amount. The, the bulk of that extra work comes really with the initial implementation of the system like this. From, from a technical perspective, a data perspective, a lot of that work is upfront. That's not to say that that work doesn't continue over time because every time a student changes sections, the data has to be resynchronized. We set up a lot of automation to handle that, but that automation takes a lot of care and feeding. So systems change over time, data fields change over time. Every time we add a system, it adds cycles and process to our work. That's part of the reason that we talk about potentially consolidating systems where it's appropriate to help with that burden. It's not always a perfect one-for-one, add something, take something else, because when it makes sense to add something, it makes sense. We do try to leverage a lot of our data systems to, to, when we're sending data one place, we send it multiple places at the same time, just for simplicity's sake. So we leverage those efficiencies whenever we can, but when we add systems, that's some additional burden.
And, and is this a remote system or is this an in-house?
It's entirely cloud-based.
Cloud-based, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Switzer. You might have answered this already, but it's so I didn't catch it. So if a student is enrolled in the online academy and they're not suc- being successful, do they have the option to then go back into a traditional classroom or blended, or how is that going to work?
Yeah, so, and that's, that's actually, I didn't answer that exactly, so I'm glad you asked it. So we've talked a lot about that, and, you know, there is, this will be scheduled as a period in the teacher's day. So there is absolutely no reason why, if a student, well, if a student's enrolled in the online course and the reason is medical and they, they truly can't come to the building, that obviously we, we do our interventions, but that would be remote, right? But yeah, we actually have already, like with our blended processes, I mean, there's just times that we say, you're in a blended class and, and we're not seeing success, right? And, and so we're going to need you here in person. We would anticipate that there would be similar processes for that. Next year, again, that makes it a little bit difficult just because of the medical component. There might be students that we can't say that to, but we certainly can say more check-ins, more synchronous check-ins. So where we say it's self-paced, it's not that we're completely on our own, we would definitely have the ability. And some teachers have actually even asked, is there some reason that we can't have it be synchronous for the first week? Like, maybe I want to get these kids for the first week and really have them with me more often? Yeah, we can, we can absolutely do that. I will say that we have a model for this, and this has been some of our online summer school classes. And they've been very successful where we've built them out, not in the same platform, and we've built them out kind of in a hybrid manner. But over the past several years, that's how it's worked. So the teachers maybe had them synchronous or more check-ins in that, those first few days, and then maybe for the end, for some of the assessments. So there's definitely some flexibility there, and certainly if a student is not being successful.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we'll call that a wrap. Thank you very much, Dr.
All right, thank you.
And we'll move on to item 6.3, which is the Wellness Committee update. Dr. Switzer, again.
Yes, thank you. And I had to make sure I stopped sharing. And this is just an update, it's a, it's an update that we do each year for the board. We've got a wellness policy in our board manual, as well as actually quite a bit of state requirements around wellness, as well as just ongoing wellness initiatives within the district because they're the right thing to do. And so if we look at our process that we take to monitor wellness, you'll see that we have a wellness committee. And then this committee is something where individual members might be working on different components throughout the course of the year. When we say wellness, when the state says wellness, it covers everything from nutrition to PE classes, to learning about nutrition, to learning about health, to how we feed our lunches. There's actually, most of the law is around actually the school lunch programming and some of the FDA requirements. And so this is a very broad-reaching policy and update, so it'll kind of cover a little bit of ground, which is why the committee member includes a nurse, it includes Mr. Reed, who is our Director of Food Service, as well as some principals and folks on the curriculum side. So each year, we review Board Policy 6.50, an administrative procedure. And then we also, and this is actually, the first time this is being presented to the board, we are required to do a triennial assessment that we keep on file. It's an FDA assessment that proves that we are in compliance with our policy for the purposes of our school lunch program. And so we worked with Mr. Reed on that, and we do have that on file, it's attached here. It's not required to be approved, and it's not even actually required to be submitted. Took a while to find somebody at the state who could tell us that, but they said, just keep it in your files in case we need it, which is fine because we have it done, and the good news is we're in compliance. And then we looked at the different areas, so nutrition and food services, curriculum and instruction, health services, which as you can imagine, has been a very busy year in health services, social-emotional learning, and then staff wellness. And so we have the findings below. You can see that we have that link, as well as the attachment in the packet, to the overview of compliance with our policy, as well as our triennial assessment. Again, very happy to say that we are in compliance with all of those aspects. And then just some specific updates by department and topic below, and you can see we started with food service. I actually feel like this year, we've had occasion to update the board a lot more frequently on some of our food service approaches due to remote learning and some of the needs with our school lunch program. So you can see some updates there. In curriculum and instruction, you've heard us present about physical education, how the ruler curriculum is being implemented there. That also crosses over for social-emotional learning. We also are moving forward with just how we can use some technologies, the heart rate monitors, in order to really integrate some of our health approaches for PE. We had a little challenge this past year because we didn't actually have enough monitors to send home with every individual student. But now that we have those students back, we can kind of re-implement our approach with those heart rate monitors. Again, in health services, we have talked more about our health services this year than we have ever in the past. We just have heroes in our health services department who have, are still doing amazing duty with some of our updates, but really just looking at some of those pieces relating to COVID, giving some updates on physicals and immunization, that's typical for each year because those are some of those mandated pieces, and then vision inherent testing. Social-emotional learning, again, has been so, such an area of focus this year due to COVID, as well as underlying, looking at some of those curriculum pieces that are a little bit longer-reaching and visionary. So while we have some of our social-emotional intervention that we've been doing this year, we also have those longer-reaching pieces that you've heard us talk about, such as that ruler curriculum that's going to be implemented, looking at how we can bring that K-12 and then take that standardized structured approach. We're really looking at our advisory time in the middle school to make sure that we're using that the best that we can to implement those social-emotional learning pieces. So there was an update there for our wellness committee. Staff wellness, Dr. Zir provided an update, looking just at the well-being assessments that we made available to our staff, and so giving some, some data there in terms of number of screenings completed. I think huge celebration when we look at the increase in screenings there for what we're making available for staff health. And then also EAP services, so promoting our staff mental health and supporting there as well. So our next steps, we have our triennial assessment on file, and we've been told just to hang on to it till the state needs it, which is great. We'll, we'll keep it on file. Like I said, I'm glad we're in compliance. We will be reconvening throughout next year, as well as continuing to work on all of these pieces. And, and I think we've learned a lot this year through the pandemic about the importance of student and staff wellness. As we come out of this year, I think we'll have occasion to just do a lot of assessing and reflecting and saying, okay, how can we use what we've learned, you know, in a difficult year that I think we've done some really good things, but I think also a vengeance hard for families and for students and for staff, and use that to really springboard a focus on wellness throughout next year. and use that to really springboard a focus on wellness throughout next year. So this is the sort of update to the board, to the community. It will be posted publicly as required in our board packet, as well as the compliance piece can be posted on the website, because that was another component of our policy. And we will continue our process for next year. So with that, I will take any questions anybody has.
Questions? One, perhaps two overhanded other questions. When I dreamed through this earlier, it was kind of struck me and just wanted to know more about how we truly encourage kind of the intersection of physical activity and nutrition. And I know, like, you know, there's a whole host of things about the food you can serve and the content and the varieties and such, but it's, just wanted to kind of draw more on what we do there, like maybe in a PE setting or whatever, how do we actively encourage and educate about nutrition beyond like typical posters and requirements and stuff? But how do we try to make that live a little bit?
That actually, from the curriculum standpoint, that'll come through our health classes, through units in our health classes. And so that's a great connection. I think there's also another answer, which I'm thinking back to the towers where we were growing the lettuce and the, you know, the more hands-on, like Farm to Table. We've had some really good ideas about connecting that in kind of a bigger sense, but the basic curriculum is usually delivered through health with that and then reinforced in PE. But I do think that we've had in the past, just even within the ways that you've heard Mr. Altmeier, or you know, Dr. Rowan, who's high school principal, or now Mr. Beal, thinking about how we frame out sort of the food in our cafeteria, how we put choices in front of students and then help them make them. I think we've always got some avenues for next steps on that, but I think those would be kind of the big picture, open-ended way that we approach that question.
Okay. And I think it may sound basic, but then yes, what is the contemplating that health class component of it too, which is a part of it?
Well, it's actually not, I mean, it's not that basic. I mean, McKinney County positively rose up the list of the more favorable places to live in Illinois, especially in around the suburbs of Chicago. The one area that we actually declined was our level of obesity in the county increased. So it's not, it's not too broad of a question. The question we need to be asking is, of what role do we play in maybe, from educating our families to educating our students of how a healthy lifestyle can contribute to a long, happy lifestyle, and where that intersection is? That's an important one, and it really, it comes down to time, and when does it all, when can it fit in? And how does it fit in with so many else? You know, Mr. Cready was, and I were talking, discussing earlier about legislative update, and the onslaught of unfunded mandates usually come with time-based concerns, cramming more into the school day. But it's an extremely important topic, and one that, you know, I love seeing McKinney County rise the ranks of the best places to live, but the obesity, the decrease in terms of rating of, an increase in obesity is concerning.
No, I think that, you know, as a, as a younger person, I probably wasn't as adherent to it, but I think it is important in this facet, everything that can come from, just better nutrition and awareness of what you're chasing in. So just kind of.
I agree with you.
Trigger that thought, so, thank you.
COVID didn't help that.
No, it always did not.
COVID did not help.
Not all the time at home, on the couch.
Yes, a lot at home.
Netflixing and refrigerating.
Yeah.
Or pantry, maybe.
I did have a question, it's been a long year, so forgive me. It was probably a little over a year ago. Is Ruler the program that has the monitoring device you talked about in PE to help kids? Or am I mixing? I apologize.
No, but you have a good memory to ask that question. No, Ruler is actually a social-emotional learning framework from the Yale Center on Emotional Intelligence. And so it's a big-picture framework, looking at how students regulate emotions, how can we identify what's important? It has large pillars that we can sort of structure our social-emotional learning around. So we've been getting our PE, we sort of core teams, so right now, up to this point, it has been some teams of administrators with a couple PE teachers getting trained, and then we're actually adding another cohort of that over the summer. It comes with lessons, but it also, even more importantly, is sort of the overarching pillars and framework that sort of will set the stage for that social-emotional learning piece at the, specifically at the middle and high school to start, but then also reaching into elementary.
Okay, and so that device we talked about, that was to help kids to recognize their own internal anxiety?
That was when we were exploring the heart rate monitors that I was talking about. Those aren't the old-style heart rate monitors. Some of them had the capability to give some of that biofeedback as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, Dr. Schultzer. We will move on to item 6.4, IHSA Annual Membership. That time here again.
So it's the annual membership, going through this each year, and it's pretty routine. However, I did want to just point out, it's a slight change that the IHSA Financial Ad-Hoc Committee approved in terms of the association fee. As we know, that a large revenue source for the IHSA comes from the state series. And most of the state series have been canceled from March of 2020 till now. There have been a few components, but not as the same level that it's been. And so with that, IHSA developed what they have as the IHSA, we partner, as well as, you know, most districts in the state through IHSA to provide those athletic and extracurricular-type activities for our students. And so part of this, what they developed was a graduated fee structure. And so for the next three years, based on our enrollment at our high school, there is a membership association fee that is increased from previous years. And so this year, we would see that fee be $2,000 based on our enrollment size. Next year, it would be cut in half, it would be 100, or 1,000, and then 500. What IHSA said they would do is, it's set in stone for three years as a graduated plan and structure, but they are going to go ahead and at the end of each year, review that, so that it's not just a guarantee that we would be continuing to pay that dependent on their revenue and their budget each year. So I did want to point that component out, and definitely know that we do partner quite well with them, and definitely understand the struggles that the pandemic has had on them as well. And so, again, that's nothing, right now, what we would do is we would just move this forward, that the board and the high school are recognizing that we'll follow all the state rules and laws, constitution of the IHSA and all of those components, and we'll go ahead and take action on it next month, or not next month, two weeks around, next meeting. I did want to point out that graduated fee structure and the rationale behind it. Any questions?
All right, we're good on that. We will take that forward for approval at the next board meeting. Brings the item 6.5, Service Agreement with Thought, Lead and Network.
All right. So very excited about this one. If you all remember back to the last Triple I conference that we attended, Shawn Achor, author of The Happiness Advantage, was the keynote speaker, and offered a couple of sessions, as did Schaumberg 54, and how they've implemented the Orange Frog mindset into their, into their school system. And I, you know, I had a number of lengthy conversations with some of you, and how excited you were about that. And I had just seen Mr. Achor at a conference that I was at about a month prior. He's compelling. I mean, the story that he tells of how you link the happiness mindset and the building of resilience into our learners, and shifting the climate and culture of our staff to be ready to help our students find their own internal happiness that translates into intrinsic motivation, is nothing short of inspiring. So that's part of the reason why it's here, other than the fact that it's a, it's a contract that is needing approval, but we are seeking approval at the regular board meeting to approve the contract to have Shawn Achor be our back-to-school kickoff district speaker. We haven't had a kickoff speaker for probably four years. It's something we've actually kind of shifted away from, focusing more on internal improvement efforts as a kickoff. But by, but because of the dynamic nature and the actual reality, that he's not doing school kickoffs or welcomes anymore. This was a laborious negotiations process led by Dr. Del Castillo to convince them that he needed to come see us. And so Shawn Achor will be, it'll be virtual, but he'll be welcoming our staff back and talking about how we are going to begin our journey with the Orange Frog, and infusing the happiness advantage into our schools. So item 6.5 is seeking your approval at the regular board meeting for us to engage in that contract with them to be our opening day speaker. And then in 6.6, when we get to that, I'll explain a little bit more about the ensuing program beyond Shawn.
And maybe just a discussion for the session, maybe just blend those two together now in terms of how that.
I can do that. So obviously, as we, you know, we just talked about, and the questions of the focus of social-emotional learning, it has become, it was already front and center in some of the education circles in our minds of what our students need, but it came full circle in terms of society, and how our need for improvement to health services, but just the social-emotional learning support in schools, and the infusion of culture and climate in support of that. Mr. Troy just brought up a point a little while ago about our systems, the different systems, and how many systems we have. And that was a concern for me, because Ruler, as you mentioned, Mr. Romero, is a, is part of our SEL framework that we've been training, training the trainers and training our staff for preparation for a full-on rollout in the fall. What we were looking for was a supplemental approach to support that and infuse in terms of not just the tiered MTSS structures of social-emotional supports, but more the culture of the building and bringing a, as I said, a culture of happiness in our kids, a way of conducting ourselves as adults that breeds that happiness in kids, and brings out the intrinsic motivation, seeking the things that make them happy, and school being a place that they attribute that happiness as a source of that happiness. Because when you're happy, we all, we learn better. We enjoy, when we enjoy being together and being in a place of learning, our relationships flourish. And that's essentially what the Orange Frog is. So it's a multi-year approach to infusing this mindset into our district. And yes, it starts with administration, but it does so in a way that we can begin infusing it into the culture in our buildings with staff. And what the 6.6 is, is the way this begins, is it'll be a two-day training for all administrators in the district in late July, where representatives from the Orange Frog will come and they'll, they'll train us on how the steps that we need to take to infuse that, begin infusing that mindset and building the systems that we need and how we operate, to then lay the groundwork for the following year, when our teachers will receive their training, and then the focus then shifts to a more a student and community component. So this is a multi-year process, and this is step one of that. We were, we were very eager in the initial planning stages of doing this following that Triple I experience that we had, and then the pandemic threw the biggest curveball that we could ever, you know, swing and miss on. So now it's time, and we're ready, we're ready to get that started. We're extremely excited. We typically have a boot camp where we handle administrator academies. We have all the administrators already come together in the summer. We're shifting where this is going to be our focus. And the memo that mentions is one of the three primary focuses. The social-emotional learning will be front and center in how we service our students for the entire school year. And I'm really excited about this being part of the avenue which we'll take. So any questions, I'll do my best to answer.
How does this align to that, what about, so like a half-day session at the conference? Is it, was that half-day session kind of condensed version of the two today, or is it kind of out of those two related?
The presentation to the staff is going to be just an hour kickoff of what is the research behind, and the Harvard research that Shawn Achor did on the happiness advantage and the mental side, and how that connects to school. The two full-day training is how we then begin laying the groundwork in our, in our system to support that. I have not been through the two-day training. I know Mrs. Romero, and our Director of Social-Emotional Learning, is leading the charge here with support of Dr. Del Castillo and the special services team. So they've gone through a one-day version of that training, and they're going to come and they're going to physically spend two days with us to help bring us up to speed, and then we'll move on from there.
Okay.
I wish I had a better answer for you, but I've got to go through it before I can give you that level of detail.
Yeah.
Dr. Del Castillo wasn't able to be with us tonight, but she could give a more detailed explanation, and probably can at the regular meeting in May.
All right, sorry, I attended that, that half-day workshop, and I thought it was very good, so I'm just curious how.
I've only seen Shawn Achor speak, in the one-hour form. I haven't been through the training myself, so I'm looking forward to it. Read the books, but looking forward to the actual training.
Another question? And I'll have to, is it one thing, and I think that I'm okay with it, but the cost factor on the speaking engagement was a little bit. I don't know.
He is maybe the hottest game in town in terms of education right now, but it is, it is a lot.
Is that Zoom Live, or you said?
It is Zoom Live.
Okay.
So that way, we can, we can, we can get him, and he'll be in front of every single one of our teachers at the same time. Otherwise, we've been, we've been doing it, usually we split the district into two or three different segments when we have these speakers come in, but the cost is similar to what we've had when they've been in person. But he is, he's the hottest game in town right now, from The Today Show to every school wants to have him. And usually, they're getting one of his associates instead of him.
Okay. So just to reiterate, we'll take both the 6.5 item and 6.6 to the board for approval at the next meeting. And that wraps up the curriculum and handed over to Finance, Mr. Quagliano.
Pass it down?
Yes. Pass it a little bit of time.
Very good. 7.1 is our payables. We have our purchase orders and press checks, accounts payable, disbursements. Any questions, concerns related to the license from the committee? No issues from the committee, anyone else? That, we'll move that forward to the board. 7.2, monthly fiscal updates. Mr. Altmeier, it's your turn.
Thank you very much. Not too much to note, I will be bringing an Extracurricular Committee recommendation to the board at the next regularly scheduled board meeting. I did a few points to note regarding the operational efficiency goals. You know, as part of that strategic planning goal, we've done a lot of different things during the month. We did an accounts payable audit, we looked at our private facility contracts, and the audit of all invoicing that was done there. We used to have American Express as a kind of a peak card, rebate card, that we used to pay certain vendors. And while that went away about a year, eh, maybe two years ago, because not too many vendors were taking Amex anymore. And we've since replaced that with Capital One, and we're expecting that to bring the district an additional $60,000 in rebates that, once upon a time, we used to receive from American Express, so that's a very positive as well. Good news on the payable audit, we didn't really find anything material to note, so we've been doing a pretty good job. We have systems in place and processes in place to catch duplicate payments. On the private facility side, though, however, we did, we caught a few facilities that were actually overbilling us based on contracts we had and rates set in the system. So we are working with those private facilities on reimbursement back to the district. So the operational efficiency goals and projects and audits are going very well.
I'm going to stop you for a second. So how, when we do our accounts payable, or excuse me, our private facility contract audit, we're doing that internally ourselves?
We're doing that internally ourselves, yeah.
Yeah, so what, so you're just using, utilizing people in your department?
Utilizing people, reviewing every single private facility, going back several years, looking at every single invoice that we paid versus what we were contracted. looking at every single invoice that we paid versus what we were contracted to pay based on intensive rate versus private rate versus do they have an aid, do they not have an aid, things of that nature. So we kind of dug down deep into that. So as a result of that, obviously, we've identified, well, some internal process issues with, you know, signing off on invoices, right? And that's always a big challenge when, when you pay, you process as many payables and invoices as we do to ensure that we have processes, processes in place at every department level, at every building level. Anybody who is signing off on an invoice that flows through the payable system, we need to make sure that everybody understands that nothing is to be paid until, unless it's validated. And so we're implementing a few additional processes on this one to ensure that this doesn't happen again, which is why we do this.
Yeah.
It's kind of an internal control procedure.
Right.
To identify internal control issues, which I think we just found one.
Yeah, no, that's great.
Yeah, so good news there. Other than that, Senate Bill 508 is in the House. It was an assignment as of last week, just two days ago, it was moved to the Revenue and Finance Committee, so I'm hoping to learn a little more there to see if we can advance that bill. Mrs. Melandi, do you know anything?
I do not.
You do not. And then other, more good news is for the last several years I've been working on Free Care Medicaid, that SPA looks like it's going to move forward with an effective date of July 1st. So coming to school districts throughout the state of Illinois coming July 1st, we should be able to bill for Medicaid-eligible students that are non-IEP. So, you know, I'm very thankful, I've worked pretty hard on this one with IASVO and a team working with HFS that this is finally starting to move forward. So they're going to be presenting that amendment, that SPA, if you will, to CMS, which is at the federal level for approval within the next couple of weeks here and with hopes of a 30-day turnaround with the July 1st implementation. So there's going to be a lot of work for the state of Illinois, for school districts to understand this new billing methodology, but, but we'll get through it and hopefully it represents an opportunity. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from the committee? Questions from the rest of the board? Seven dot three is revenue and expenditures report, Mr. Almeyer.
Thank you very much. In front of you, you have the third quarter ending March, March 2021 financial executive summary. You know, continuing to track favorable to budget, no real additional comments versus prior month, but at a very high level. You know, revenues continue to fall short of budget driven by food services revenues, Medicaid interest earnings, building rentals, all falling significantly short really of budget due to the pandemic, interest rates arguably driven by the pandemic as well. Expenses continue to run favorable for the same reason and the dashboard that you have does outline those areas. There are several reds in red that you will notice although in comparing are fairly comparable to prior year-to-date, but please remember prior year-to-date also, you know, obviously the bottom fell out when the pandemic hit on or about March 15th. So, but we continue to run favorable to budget. Health insurance, as we always talk about health insurance, you know, we spiked to 872,000 for March claims. April claims have come in and they're about the same, they're 852,000. So the favorability that we once had in health insurance, and we had about a million dollars of projected trended favorability in health insurance four or five months ago, we are continuing to eat into that. And if we hit about a million dollars in claims for the last two months, we'll break even with budget approximately. So, you know, we hope for our employees that we continue to stay healthy and that our claims continue or they hopefully come down a little bit. So we'll continue to monitor that and talk to the board about that. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have regarding the March financial executive summary.
Questions from the committee? Questions from the others on the board? For that report, seven point four, revenue contracts. We have revenue contracts, the questions related to those.
Actually, I did miss the, I was looking for it, but easy, quick question on the prior item, is the activity funds, any issues with those just given all the COVID suspensions and delays and do we have like situations where, you know, money's not expended like it was meant to? Or does that, you know, any special circumstances that you're aware of coming up from that?
No, you know, I think the majority of our clubs and accounts have done, you know, the best they can this year to keep kids active, to keep those clubs and activities going. But I think they continue to do the best they can and from an activity financial standpoint, no, I'm not aware of any, any specific issue on that front.
Okay, thank you.
Seven point four is revenue contracts is one. Girls lacrosse for the Monadi's Pizza, Mall Four Monadi's Pizza.
Send them over.
Send them my way.
Any opportunities in the quality control firm?
Exactly, you can help them out with that. So if there's no issues with that, we can move that forward to the board for approval. Seven dot five is the bus driver referral program.
Well, as you know, we've talked quite a bit about the district shortage and national shortage of bus drivers that are out there and the variety of different recruiting techniques and strategies and things that we have implemented throughout this year and continue to implement throughout the year. We've been talking and wanted to kind of share a conceptual idea out there and get feedback from the board on doing a bus driver referral program, an incentive-type program where if an employee in the district, not just from the transportation department, but any employees from the district were to refer someone to the transportation department for a bus driver, that there would be an incentive for them. Just another outside-of-the-box way of thinking, we have been putting out in the newsletters at the district level as well as at the building level and we know that those things get out there and they work and they might be on that smaller, smaller scale, but we had a parent who saw that and, hey, my father is going to be retiring at the end of the school year, he would be perfect, his personality, all those things, reached out to us, got transportation in contact and boy, was she right, right? Her father was that ideal candidate for that, very interested, would have to go through, you know, the training and all of those components, but that was, you know, a referral there from a parent just being pushing out our need. And so one of the things that we were looking at is that the need of, we have how many employees here that may know people that are looking or interested in that job. And kind of broad appeal, what we would be looking at would be that there would be a $500 incentive. So if Mrs. Stock refers me to the transportation department, get, you know, we're looking that, application has gone through and Laura Hooper interviews, I would have to go ahead at the time of the interview and let them know where the referral came from, if I was then hired and successfully completed the 90-day probationary period, it's not just she refers me, we have an interview, but would go through that whole 90-day probationary period that she, if she's still employed by the district, you know, hopefully it wasn't, you know, just at the end of the year and is not returning next year, but that she would then receive that incentive. Again, we have great employees that you saw, they understand and they love our district, they think their word of mouth and their, their ability to talk about the great things that we're doing here and why it is such a great place to work, thinking that, that referral could help be just another avenue that we have not tapped on the door for. And so wanted to kind of talk to the board and get any feedback on something like that, something that we've done, we've done signing bonuses and all that, we just can't, you know, lure them in and attract them, or trying to, but this would be just another, another strategy out there. No thoughts, ideas, questions?
Well, questions, okay, so what do we, numbers-wise, we're back in, what's capacity? I mean, I'm just saying capacity with just 55 on a bus or capacity with 75 on a bus? How many drivers, I'm trying to get it, how many drivers are we trying to?
Our magic number right now as of today is 21. We do 21 once we're back at full capacity with our regular route for all of our secondary and then elementary out of district routes, all of those.
Okay, so and right now we have, what do we have, like 70?
Uh, yeah, we're probably with that and then we have a bus agent and all of those things, yeah.
Right, so you're still 30, 30% short here. Just trying to identify the need, how dire is the need, okay? The, you know, economic incentive justify doing that because you, you know, you'll be out potentially, potentially 10, 10 grand in settings doing that, so.
I know we hire.
I'm just trying to frame the discussion, I don't know if I've figured it out yet, so.
90 days?
I have a dumb question to start with.
That's okay. No, this is a dumb question.
So like whatever normal is, I mean, is it, is it just, I guess that's maybe a dumb question, but is the pandemic a reason for the shortage or is there something else in the mix where it's kind of a new normal that it's just going to be around?
Yeah, yeah, so it is, that's a great question, actually. When we went on our lockdown last year in March, not knowing how long that was going to be, we were down 12 drivers already. We do have our full-time subs that are able to do and we have fantastic people down there that can piecemeal things together and are able to kind of wobble our way through. But each year, and Dr. Zer, you may be able to, to not give a specific here, but each year we come into the school district, we're down the number of staff that we truly feel that we need to be able to efficiently and effectively get all the kids to and from school, to the out-of-district placements, field trips, we don't even have those this year, our athletic activities, which are now really picking up right now, but.
It's a longer-term macro trend.
It is, yeah.
Okay, I got you.
I can speak to that trend a little bit, it's not just, it's not just us, this is a national trend we're seeing, you know, with bus drivers, you know, we've talked to, you know, some of the bus driving contract services out there for students specifically and, you know, they're, they're struggling with the same thing. So just not our issue and we're seeing it in the labor force just in general where, you know, I know there's businesses that are reducing their hours because they can't staff and my wife was discussing the Pepsi delivery guy, they had some big signing bonuses and some big salaries and weren't able to get drivers. So it's just the bus driver shortage, but we're also looking at, you know, other areas too where companies, school districts, what have you, are having a tough time bringing people on. And I've just seen in general our pool, our pools, if you will, decrease significantly. We're hiring a number of secretary positions and they're just, the pools aren't, the numbers aren't as large as they used to be. So it's kind of interesting from that standpoint that there's just a general labor shortage that we've got going on across the country right now. And if we do return to that normalcy, hopefully that bounces back.
The pandemic didn't help.
Yeah, the pandemic definitely didn't, yeah.
Talking about being comfortable, being in a.
What's the rule of a worldwide pandemic in a metal box with 75 children? So what's our, yeah, right, so what's our driver pay rate?
1732 is the base. Didn't have any experience.
I'm just trying to quick, there are some industries that, again, part of your problem right now is we have fairly rich unemployment benefits and that are coming to you regularly every week if you get a decision to stay home, not expose yourself to those types of risks, you're going to say, you know what, I think I'm just going to sit home right now, take this. So it's happening in the restaurant industry, any low-paying wage or lower, excuse me, wage-paying job is in competition with, you know, unemployment benefits that are.
The unemployment.
Benefits are.
That are hurting.
Yeah.
And I know that's not per se the topic on this, but some of the other things that we will be kind of looking at further investigation and bringing to you for the future, we're looking at some of the different certifications that are needed for driving of different types of vehicles for different types of events, right? So there's the two to school as well as the activities and there are some of those that need a CDL, some that don't need the CDL but does the bus driving permit, but it depends on if you're driving the bus, you need them both. And so some of those other types of vans and things like that, we're going to look at that, that could help assist, you know, some people, I personally would be terrified driving the bus and all of that, but maybe if it was, you know, a van or something like that with a different certification, I'd be much more comfortable. And so we are going to look at those kinds of things and see how that might roll out into the future and look at what options might be there and collaborate with some of the companies like for student and whatnot for some expense and just further knowledge and experience there. And so those are other ways that we're trying to tackle and look at that long-term effect that we know we're going to have with this shortage.
So on the topic, to broaden the conversation, we did learn from first students that there's an easier, maybe an easier market of those interested in driving buses, less of us, Felder and Rockford, and that's where a lot of the drivers from. So we just got an ad that's just going to be religious, you may hear it on 1055 if you listen to it, speaking another way, alternative way to attract drivers as well as advertising in the Rockford area, newspapers of openings, trying to pull some of those.
Right.
Those drivers east a little bit if that can make sense. And it's not too far, especially now that the express.
Community's not bad from Felder, right?
All options have to be on the table for us moving forward, even considering how, how we adjust our rider, the ridership if we can't get on mark. But right now, we're solely focused on being aggressive and being on mark.
Yeah, so focusing back to the conversation on what's being requested or proposed, yeah, I mean, again, you won't, if you get 20 drivers, they won't all come by a referral. So when I throw out the number, there's going to cost, it won't, it's like the worst case scenario and it's not going to be that high. So, I mean, I personally would be willing to give it a try to see if it helps us access the labor pool that is tough to, tough to deal with.
Yeah, I was going to relate to a program, that a former pro job I had where there was always a pro program in place for, you know, more professional level jobs, but I mean, at that point, I don't think it was, you know, it wasn't a big expense item, but it was a nice perk to kind of find, find candidates you wouldn't otherwise want. And so, I mean, just, you know, based on this discussion and just, you know, in the back of my mind, that past experience, you know, I would be fine as well.
Hello, Mr. Craig.
I agree with Mr. Gentry, I mean, similar programs in my world. Well, I guess my only question would be like, does it make sense to like have that on the application of who referred you because sometimes, you know, it doesn't come up in the.
Yeah, so I've asked Dr. Zer to go ahead and look at if that can be, so our Apple Track system is generic for the county, but we can add specific questions for various positions that are, you know, district-specific. So we've asked to take a look and see if we can get that added to for these positions, so.
And we would also screen that at the interview too.
Yeah.
That wouldn't come up. We're also having Ms. Hooper screen, since we've got these different sources. up, and we're also having, um, the super screen, since we've got these different sources that we're tapping into that we don't normally tap into, I'm wanting to hear, you know, if it was referral, yeah, or if you heard us on the radio, you know, is that working? Um, you know, we've gone out to Indeed, we've gone out to Monster, uh, we're getting a lot of views, um, just not getting the applicants. So, uh, we're, we're going down some different avenues that we just normally don't go down, so, uh, we're going to have to, um, vet that out through the process and see, you know, find something that works here.
Okay, anybody else on the board have any, anything you want to weigh in on that?
I just, I, I think it's important to also remember that our school is a hundred percent bus, so we're unique compared to another school district that maybe doesn't need, doesn't have the same need for bus drivers as we do, and I, I think that's an important point to make just for the general public, that we have a different, uh, situation than a district surrounding us. So, but I, I'm supportive of that because we need it, we need the bus drivers and.
Mr. Almeyer's going to find a way to get it partially reimbursed by the state of Illinois, this transportation, there you go, claim, right?
Okay.
Found out. Oh, because the state doesn't reimburse us.
Sorry.
I mean, have it fully in there, and then reimburse to the extent that they reimburse it about sixty percent, so.
And I know, yeah, and I know we talked about that magic number twenty-one on Mr. Mariano, I know you asked, I think you were asking earlier about that transportation question about, was it capacity, do we know if anything's changing, uh, was that the direction you were going to go with that? We don't, and, and I'm hoping through some of, uh, the advocacy and things like that when we're talking about social distancing, and seeing the, um, implications that Dr. Rowe talked about of, we may have had a positive case, but we're not seeing that transferring, um, on the bus or in the school-related kind of, uh, components, that hopefully that will change. They have not shown an indication yet on that, and, and, but they also haven't done some of the other mitigations, uh, that are out there, but if that weren't to change, that twenty-one is much larger. And so, I think we have to kind of address going forward of, yep, we know this, but this is back to our kind of normal capacity world, but that number of twenty-one could be higher if they don't change that fifty, um, on a bus capacity.
Okay, okay.
Anything further, so, is this something we need to move or report through, or can you guys act down in administrative?
Well, we could, this is, this is, we don't need, we were, we did the same thing, there's no, there's no action either because there's no specific, um, money being spent, we don't have that, that tangible amount yet, so we thought just getting feedback of general approval of the program, and then we would come back and report to you, um, for transparency purposes, um, in August and September, the results of how many employees we received from this, so that way the dollar amount, uh, will come through clearly.
Okay, so you have your directive, so we can, uh, move on to HR, human resource.
Okay, first item up on HR is eight dot one, human resource updates, Dr. Zer.
Just the monthly updates here to give you an idea of where HR is headed, um, this past month and into May, and its, um, now preparation for, um, the next school year. Do have a few things, few things we need to wrap up evaluation-wise, uh, here, uh, this week and next, but, uh, moving forward, um, not only with the bus driver component, but, um, all positions that we may have open as folks resign or we fill retiree positions, so, uh, we have a very active, um, we, we have a very active, um, hiring process going on right now, so we've got some positions out there to look at and get filled, and, um, so we're full steam ahead for August right now.
Any questions, somebody? All right, thank you for the update. Bring us to, um, item eight, eight dot two, job description, Dr. Zer.
There's just some adjustments to job descriptions here, we have director of O and M, Doug and I sat down and, um, just made some minor adjustments to that one in terms of, um, you know, working with the principals at the buildings and, um, taking a, a little bit more responsibility to Doug and his expertise, um, as opposed to the principals, so minor change there. And then, um, Dr. Schlitzer and I sat down and just did some updates to the department chair job description, you know, to ensure, um, that we're covering, uh, that six through twelve range, and, uh, so no major changes, um, that you're seeing with the job descriptions, and, uh, the recommendation is to move those forward to the regular board meeting.
Any questions from committee or anyone else? Okay, now we will carry those forward to approval at the next board meeting, and that will bring us to building grounds, Mr. Troy.
Okay, item nine dot one, O and M updates, this is our only time to talk, Mr. Rafferty.
Thank you. A quick scallywag just to update you, the Huntley High School Fine Arts Edition, I was happy to write a note to Lamp today after conferring with Wold, we need one electronic package delivery to us, which they need to download, and, uh, one hard copy of some electronically submitted documents, and, uh, the final pay request for the job, so we're really close. I hope to say we're done next month. Um, we have a lot of projects kicking off, planning for summer, it'll be a busy month now, uh, with pre-construction meetings, had a couple this week, and we'll have another one soon. Um, the, uh, solar project, um, I've been pursuing, uh, our partner, uh, for consideration and some vegetation control issues, you might see some ground that's a little too bare, and maybe along Harmony Road, there's a couple of trees that, uh, I had to remind them that they're still under warranty to get replaced, uh, that look a little brown, and should be green. Our ComEd solar billing, uh, there's, uh, no, uh, bills in yet, um, I was on their site where now is a large customer, I can directly access and download bills, I was told by their Green Power Net Zero metering people that, uh, the billing adjustments are, are about done, so I thought, well, why don't I go in and see if I can download them and beat the mailman to the punch? Um, I got five out of six for one account and the system crashed, and, uh, I've been trying for several days, they've had people looking into it and, I'm filing electronic requests that they're, for repairs by their people, so I don't have that for you yet. But what I do have is some interesting information, attachment one, page three, on it, just, take a close look at these dashboards, we participate and ComEd has an opportunity for us to load some information in our building profile, a little simpler than, uh, EPA Energy Star, but it takes our billing history and, and compares to last year. And this, this particular month of billing, uh, March meter read through April meter read, if you'll notice, the average temperature is, 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 only has a delta four degrees over the, over the period, and when it's in that forty-seven degree range, uh, what we consume in energy is typically not that, um, not, not that impacted by those kinds of fluctuations in the comparative years, so it's a good look at how are we doing now with solar compared to before? And if you look really closely, there's, at the bottom of each of those bar graphs, uh, there's a little statement for each of the accounts. At Reed Road, last year, our average, uh, spend was three hundred and forty-two dollars a, a, uh, a day with ComEd for that account, this year it was eighty-four dollars. Last year we consumed four thousand nine hundred and eighty-five kilowatt-hours a day, this year we consumed only nine hundred and twenty-five. More fascinating, if you look at Square Barn Road, last year we spent four hundred and forty-eight dollars a year, this year we spent a negative thirty dollars, I'm sorry, four hundred and forty-eight dollars a, a day, this year we spent a negative thirty for the month, but we're actually then giving back, getting credit for that, but we should be seeing how many bills if I can get them. And then there's similar good news at, at Harmony Road, um, uh, last year we consumed nine thousand two hundred and fourteen kilowatt-hours a day during that month, this year we only consumed fifty-five kilowatt-hours a day. We're doing really well, with our much less costly energy and less transportation charges, demand charges, all that good stuff. Um, the, uh, the, the, the other thing on here in the attachments is the snow removal contract, uh, I had a long talk with Tovar, uh, I cited some, some sections in the contract that, um, that I had some concern about their performance and wanted them to think about tightening up. Uh, I was told they were going to look into that and probably turn in an offer, and they did not. The contract season ended April thirtieth, uh, I've drafted up, uh, a bid spec that's included here, I know that's been very controversial here over the years at District One Fifty-Eight, um, but I, I recommend that it's time that we do that. Um, I highlighted some, some proposed adjustments in the specifications, uh, if, if you would want me to go through them, I'd be happy to, or I could just go to answer quick.
Okay, any questions from the committee or the board? The, none? Anything else on the highlights in general?
No, uh, we'll be releasing the bid spec real soon then.
Okay, all right, well, thank you very much, and go ahead and move on to legislative.
Okay, ten point one, legislative updates, um, don't have a whole bunch, uh, the, House Bill Seven that I talked about, that was the consolidating, the district, uh, did not pass, uh, that was about two weeks ago. A few other ones that are out there, SB two one oh nine, uh, requires additional training for school board members, um, after January first, twenty twenty-two, and that'll be an annual, uh, new training for trauma enforcement policies. Um, SB six five four is another one that's out there, mandates one hour per day, unstructured play time for K through P, uh, and then, um, HB, HB forty, students.
You can't, you can't make this up, though.
Offsite in your backyard, okay? It's your unstructured play. And then the other one, um, uh, is HB forty, which just allows, you know, students to get, uh, full education, um, through the year of their twenty-second birthday, so, uh, I think that's a good one, so, I don't know if you had another one?
If you have anything that, that I would add, is the scary thing is, is the Senate Bill six fifty-four about mandating one hour of, of unstructured play, is that getting traction in Springfield, and I A S A came out asking for supervisors to begin advocating, um, some steps in the Springfield for this, where it comes from with well intention, good intention, the negative impact of an hour of unstructured play in K through eight, we don't have recess at six through eight, and, and PE specifically says, can I tell at the time when that occurs? So, you know, I, I spoke with our, our Luda representative, who advocates for us in Springfield, and he shared that he's actively negotiating on this bill on behalf.
You have to negotiate something.
To least restrict the elementary. This is, this is worrisome, this is worrisome, because it, you know, we're, we're more focused on an hour play versus, and we're talking about reading, reading and math here.
Right.
Um, unstructured play is very important in the elementary level, but this is scary. Uh, and then the, uh, you said.
Well, that, that bill came about because a legislator felt that children during your school day were too structured, and, you know, he, somewhere along the way, didn't have enough recess time, and so he feels strongly that children in their school day should be able to beat children, that's, that's the premise.
And he's a, and he's a professional educator, he knows that, so then he's.
Well, essentially, the problem is.
You mentioned they are, they.
The problem that affects one or a few needs to now be fixed for everyone.
Well, that's.
If I had that legislator to come spend a day at our elementary school and see what, what it's actually like, they're not sitting in rows, learning like robots, they're actively engaged, and mobility is normal, and, and at least in our school. This would be, it would be, it'd be very, very big negative for us, but. Um, then another thing that I would add, was something else that was also an advocacy request, was Senate Bill eight seventeen, that threatened to withhold evidence-based funding dollars if, uh, if school boards did not, uh, if school boards filed an address code pertaining to, um, hairstylists and other things of historical condition. Ensuring, ensuring that the students themselves and the school boards didn't implement that appropriately, they wanted to withhold EBF dollars. So we advocated against anything withholding EBF dollars for compliance, because that's not the purpose of EBF dollars.
Old with the ransom.
There's a brand-new legislator who, um, had this specific issue when he was in school, and so that's the, the.
Again.
Promise for this. As usual, it's, it's a one specific issue that a legislator brings that affects the entire state, it's another example of that.
Yeah, but who owns the bill that you can write whatever value you want, but then the other sixty people down there are going to say this is.
Well, I think everybody's doing something with that through an equity lens right now, and so, is, is it equitable, is it fair, because you have a different hairstyle than somebody else, is it fair to punish that child? I'm just telling you what the, what the thought process, very much this, this session, everything that they look at, everything that goes through the, a committee, is through an equity lens.
And, and, and per record, where I'm not, I did not advocate against ensuring that all children that are in school, um, the, the dress code reflects and do not, like, discriminate them against their, against cultural heritage or who they are as people. Our advocacy, one hundred percent, was EBF dollars are implemented for a reason, and, and, and forcing.
It has to be withheld for.
Right, they, they, it's, it's, it's not, it's not accomplishing its goal if we withhold EBF dollars.
Did we already talk about the, um, three hundred and fifty million of EBF funding?
It's not, but I did see that today.
Yes, just today, the governor announced that their, um, because the revenue or, or the budget looks mu- much better than they thought it was going to look three, three months ago, he is now increasing.
The three billion dollars.
EBF to three hundred and fifty million, whereas before was, it was.
Flat.
Flat.
That would be.
So that's, that's actually a, a win for us, and that was something that Springfield has been advocating pretty hard for all along, so I think he finally relented and realized that this is a commitment that we made to evidence-based funding in the model that we worked so hard on.
Right.
Um, and he's committed to that, so that was one good thing that happened today.
You're saying there's one good thing that's happening now? All right, all right, it's good to know, but that is, but that's important, so, unfortunately for some of those esoteric items, kind of sense usually prevails with, uh, people down there, um, you know, so, you hope, but a lot of time and effort and wasted dollars get spent lobbying for, particularly against stupid stuff like that, so, just, uh, just take some away time and effort from things that are productive. My commentary, um, Sean, you're committee, sorry.
None, any other questions?
No.
All right, moving on to eleven, Board of Education. Okay, um, we're minutes from the, uh, several meetings worth of minutes there, is, is anybody have any, uh, questions, directions concerning those minutes? Now, we'll move those forward to the board meeting, item twelve, um, we do have closed session, um, today, so I'll make a motion to, uh, move into closed session at nine twenty-four for the items indicated in the agenda, of second.
Second.
Second for Mr. Troy, roll call please.
Mr. Behring, this is Mariano, yes, Mr. Pacoano.
Yes.
Mr. Craddy.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mr. Gentry.
Yes.
This is Marini.
Yes.
Okay, we're in a closed session. Behring's still not here. The hearing's still not here.
Okay, we're back in open session. It is 10:43. We have roll call please.
Mr. Polandy.
Here.
Mr. Garrett. Mr. Country.
Here.
Mr. Claziano.
Here.
Mrs. Meyerino.
Here.
Mr. Kay.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Okay, no action take out of closed session. So I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 10:44. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second from Mrs. Meyerino. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, meeting's adjourned. Okay.